Join in the worship prayer. Dear Father, Father, we just thank you for the wonderful country of America, Lord God. And Father, we just continue to pray for each and every elected official from the White House down to the local level. Lord, we just continue to pray for this country. Father, we continue to pray that you lead in God's, Lord God. And Father, we just pray, Lord God, that we get back, Lord God, to just love, Lord God, loving people, Lord God. And Father, we just thank you, Lord God, for your many blessings, Lord God. Bless Gulf County. Bless these commissioners, Lord God. Bless our families, Lord God. As we, Lord God, try to make the right decisions concerning your people, Lord. Father, just give us wisdom, give us understanding, and give us knowledge. We just pray your hedge fence of protection around us, around this community, around this nation. We give you praise, we give you the glory, and we give you the honors. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Before I jump right into the consent, Commissioner Pridgen would like to say something.
Thank you Chairman Quinn and board members for giving the privilege of speaking first this morning. Yesterday, we had a good, I thought could be a productive meeting with talking about land use change, and I want to thank this board for honoring the request to have that. But there was something that bothered me yesterday, some things that were said, Chairman, and I want you to know that this is not our community that makes those kind of statements. And I want to make sure you know that we went through storms, we've been through COVID together. That's not the way we do things here in Gulf County. And so from this board, I'd like to make the most, we don't do that again. And I'd also like to thank Commissioner McLemore for the speedy response and stepping up. And before we go on, I just, I was very upset on that yesterday, I might attest to that. That's just not the way we do things in Gulf County. And we're trying to get the public involved, and when we have public involvement, we really want to make sure that it's productive, we listened, and we acted appropriately. So, thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. And just to go along with that, we can, I've been in this community a long time, and we can agree to disagree. And we shouldn't be calling, saying things that's disrespectful to one another. With that being said, I told a lady the other day, I said, I'll just say thank God for Jesus, because that's who changed my life. And sometimes, you know, some people speak, and they say stuff, they try to get under your skin, but I've been doing this a long time, and a lot of people know me, that that stuff doesn't bother me. But with that being said, we'll move right along into the meeting. But I appreciate the words, I appreciate Commissioner Macron calling it out also, and I appreciate, I appreciate you guys sticking behind me, I appreciate that. With that being said, if you would like to come before the board, you get three minutes. If you want to represent yourself, you get five minutes. If you're representing the group, when the buzzer goes off, that is your time. We may ask for to extend your time, it's up to the board to extend your time. If you get three minutes, you get three minutes. If you get five minutes, you get five minutes. We will not be addressing or making comments once you leave the microphone. We don't need anyone yelling out in the audience, shouting, or whatever. Once you leave the microphone, your time is over, your time is over. If you come before the board, please make sure you state your name and address for the record. And please, if you have cell phones, please silence your cell phones, all these cell phones going off during the meeting. At this time, we'll move right into the consent agenda. This is where one vote covers multiple items. Is there anyone in the audience with any questions or concerns? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't have a motion on the full disclosure of the commission. He said that's why he made the motion. Conduct in the.
I understood.
Thank you for catching me. I got wrapped up in the moment myself. Thank you for that. I don't know if we need a motion. We have it. It was, I just don't want to do that again. And it's so noted, that's all.
We have a policy in place.
We got a policy.
Go on, pull your motion back.
I'll pull the motion back, I'm sorry.
Mr. Noah, you want to address anything on?
I just, I know it comes up from every couple of years. It's about 10 years now, Chairman, Commissioners, that we had a public speaking ordinance put in place because the county was sued for actually this commission allowing people to speak longer than three minutes. And so what we did is we actually codified this commission to give the First Amendment and somewhat a right to speak up there. They're actually in the audience, the subject of the lawsuit. So, the county adopted a law, a public speaking ordinance, to give people the ability to speak. The county was attacked and sued in federal court over it. So, fast forward, we actually adopted a pledge of civility beyond the actual law. And so what you call for in both your ordinance and your policy is just civility and respect. You share it amongst yourselves, you share it with the staff, and you share it with the public. And then you, in your ordinance, ask the same of the people that come up to the podium, or from behind the dais and behind the bar. So, anybody that comes up before you all, you all have that three minutes, they show you the civility and the respect, and you exchange that back to them. And then there is an ability for the sheriff to remove someone if there's any kind of civil disobedience in the room. So, it's in place, it's been in place almost now for a decade, and the policy and the law is in place in Gulf County to utilize as you see fit.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone in the public, any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Consent agenda? All right, come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. I spoke on this, Robert Branch, Port Saint Joe. I spoke on this August 27th of last year, and the question is, actually, item number 38, can y'all pull that? Or, and we come back later and talk about it to keep this meeting responsive and going through? My understanding is, when you sign that, as y'all new commissioners, there's a couple here that's just add-on, y'all know any, y'all don't know anything about it. It's actually the item 38, Jones Homestead Playground, y'all going after FERDAP grant, that's a federal grant? Are y'all aware of all that?
That's not a federal grant.
Okay, actually a grant.
That's a state grant, yes.
Okay, good, good. I appreciate clearing that up. So, y'all aware of everything on this consent agenda that y'all fixing to vote on?
We all get the consent agenda, so.
Yeah, I understand, but are y'all aware of what you're voting on?
I mean, let me read this, you want us to pull, it's a request to, if I'm looking at the right one.
Item number 38?
Yeah, request to apply for FERDAP.
Exactly. The reason that caught my attention because actually y'all, y'all actually, with the public's input, August 27th of last year, y'all actually brought this up again. And my question is, why are we going down this path again with this FERDAP grant?
So, let me read this. It says, "I am requesting permission to apply for the following grant, and for the chairman to execute the necessary documentation. Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, FERDAP. Projects applying for Stone Mill Creek Playground, Jones Homestead Playground."
Yes, sir.
You don't want us to apply for the playground for kids?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm asking why are you applying for it again? You applied for?
Well, we were awarded this project.
We were not awarded in the prior cycle, so we are applying again with the board's request.
That's good. And the reason I'm asking, I'm actually inquiring this to the new commissioner. These new commissioners, there's a lot of things being brought up that these new commissioners weren't involved in. Maybe they need to have their input on these before they vote on them. And that's why, that's what caught my attention with this grant. And this is just minor to the money that's going around in this county, but that's what caught my attention. I just want to clear that up.
What are you clearing up, Robert? I don't understand what you're saying.
I'll speak.
FERDAP grants go all over the state of Florida. County from all over the state.
Exactly. And Mr. Macron, respectfully, sir, you commented, I think, a couple of days ago about, no, exactly, Mr. Quinn, I can't apply for these FERDAP grants because my district is in the city of St. Joe. So, I don't know, I really don't understand what that meant. I know if you add all these grants up, I know if you add all these grants up, it's a lot of money. But I'll come back as long.
Thank you, that's your time.
Okay, and I'll talk about this in my three minutes. Appreciate the part.
Yeah, as a new commissioner, I attended, Aaron had to open houses for both of these, and I think the one, yours is a brand-new project in the Stone Mill Creek. It was on our list as we're going through for FERDAP grant, it's the next ones up. And spoke about it, Aaron did a good job with the public, so I did actually attend those. So, I am aware of those two that are going on there. Yours is new.
Yes, absolutely.
Because that community's growing right now on that street, and then.
Mine needs a lot of help.
And it needs the help. So, yeah, I did, Aaron did a good job. We didn't get them, I hope for this year we get. It is a good venture, this, because it takes a little bit on our part, and a lot of them putting it in, it's a good match. It's money in the bank. So, yes, FERDAP probably is a good thing, let's hope we get them.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else in the public on anything in the consent agenda? Consent agenda? Any staff members, any questions or concerns with the consent? Board members, any questions or concerns with the consent?
Mr. Trenton, staying on page 51 due to a possible future conflict.
Thanks, sir.
I just, I didn't, I just want to pull for basic talk about, I'm not going, I don't want to pull them off of there. I just want to talk about a couple of them on this, the grant on Doc Whitfield, Clay, could you tell me just a little bit about it?
What page?
Just on page 32. The. I think it's been an ongoing, if you catch me up, that's my fault, I just, catch me up on that.
So, it's one of our HMGP projects we applied for in 2020, believe it or not, and it's just now, we're getting close to actually constructing it, but it's adding, in five locations, we're adding either box culverts or larger pipes to help that road when the river floods, to keep it open longer before it overtops.
Thank you. That's because it's very well, I mean, Mark, I know, we know that, it's an issue up there. Also, number 39, I'd like to give a shout out to our Howard Creek Fire Chief. He is turning Howard Creek around, he's doing everything he can, Bill Ray is really after it. He's taken that fire department, trying to get it, they've done a safety inspection, and they're trying to get some of the free grant money that some of our other larger departments have been getting. So, my hat's off to Bill Ray on 39. Number 949, the Gulf County Tax Collector. I think this is a very wise move. I talked to Ashley, and I know y'all have too. She has really been going out at trying to do some things, and the first thing out of her mouth when she talks, we need some technology updates, and it was money very well spent. And then, that's it. I thank you all for just adding to it.
Go along with the commissioner. I also talked to Ms. Forehand, and I think she's making great strides and working toward, but she's trying to make that office more efficient, and upgrades are definitely needed, and just wanted to say that.
Okay. So, you got those pages standing?
I just wanted to make comments.
All right, any other board members with any questions or concerns? All right, Mr. Wishes of the board?
I'll make the motion?
Second.
All right, I got a motion by Commissioner Pridgen to accept the consent agenda as printed. Seconded by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed. Four and over, one abstention. All right, Mr. Hammond?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. If we could go out of order, because we've got so many, if we could let the clerk announce the bids, and then we'll come back to them later in the meeting.
We have three bids today. First one's bid 2425-11 for the Gaspin Park Playground Equipment. Our bidders are ETNT Distributors, Florida Recreational Products, Playmore Recreational Products, Playworks Playsets, Corecat Playgrounds and Site Menities, Strothers Recreation LLC, Bliss Products and Services Inc. The other bid is 2425-12, it's the White City Water Plant Automatic Transfer Switch, have four bidders. Macus Electric Supply Company, ECB Solutions LLC, Technology International Inc., Zevat Engineers Services Inc. And the last one is 2425-13, it's pre-engineered metal building. The bidders are Nitsa Construction Unlimited LLC, Geo4R Group LLC, Model lift construction Fanhandle, Holly Development Corp., Inland Construction and Engineering Inc., and Southern Construction Service.
Thank you, ma'am.
We'll come back to those when you give me the thumbs up. We've got a ship update, and Quentin was about to run late, he was giving me concerns, but now he's on the front row. If Quentin can come up and give us an update, please.
Quinn, just come up and just let people know who you represent, we appreciate it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Hammond, for the invite. I'm Quentin Eastberg, I'm with the Appalachian Regional Planning Council. We help administer the ship program in Gulf County, and I brought along our team, introducing them. I know there's some new faces on the board, some new faces on this side, and on the podium as well. So, this is Marcus Tompkins, he's our housing program manager, and Hillary Carrasco is our housing coordinator. So, Hillary actually is coming in for Isabella, who had worked a lot in Gulf County over the last year. She's still on the team, we still have her institutional knowledge, but she's just moving into a different position. So, this is the team behind. I think it was one of the last meetings you all wanted to have an update on the ship program, so I've got a few documents, am I allowed to approach and?
Yes, sir.
Give those to y'all? So, Commissioners, what you have in front of you are two updates. The first one's kind of just like, they're both one pager, but the first one kind of talks about the three things I want to cover. The first one is this program process, that's the two-page handout that you have. So, we've been working with county staff on making sure to expedite the program and move through, and, you know, to be frank, I think we've been a little too patient with a lot of, you know, potential clients, and, you know, to our own detriment, and that's why I think there has been a lot of folks that haven't been moved to inactive list that are showing active still. So, I wanted to address that with you all. We've worked with county staff to kind of come up with a process that's going to be more streamlined, hopefully make the process quicker with determination, whether, you know, obviously approval, you know, or denial, and then an active application to get through for encumbrance. So, looking at those process and procedure document, kind of the way it's working is we have a pre-screening process that does the high-level stuff, you know, are they a citizen of Gulf County in the first place? You know, do they own property? You know, those kinds of big 30,000-foot level things to get them through to the main application process. That's online, that's got a 15-day, once they start an application, we're looking at 15 days for completion, and then that's determine the initial eligibility. Staff will reach out after that 15 days if the application has not been completed, and just say, hey, where are we at? Are you still interested? You know, that kind of thing, so we can move folks into the right category. After 15 days of the initial pre-submission, pre-application process, if folks are deemed eligible, that's when staff will reach out with the rest of the documentation. So, that's when we have to get all the different paperwork, banking statements, property deeds, all those kinds of things for the file. So, that's where the eligible application process starts, and I want to touch on this when I look at the numbers here in just a second on the other sheet. But you'll see, we're going to try to limit that to 15 days. You know, we really want to help folks, you know, get through the process. There are some on our full list that have been over eight months long, that we've been working with folks back and forth, and they're still listed as active. So, in an effort to streamline all that, we're going to, we created this process with staff, staff's reviewed it, Ms. Lynn, Ms. Sherry, appreciate your help on that. So, we're going to go forward, you know, with your blessing, obviously, kind of go in this direction. Going to work with folks, give them 15 days, allow a grace period, obviously, if someone's out of town or something like that, before being moved to the inactive list. And then after the end, there'll be a five-day turnaround to get the Resident Income Certification or the RIC, and then get that to you all to determine the encumbrance, because that'll still come from the board. So, we're just doing the legwork for that. So, with all that in the process, moving back to the numbers, because I think that was the big part of what we wanted to talk about today. As of yesterday afternoon, we currently have one that's in the pre-screening process, they've started an application, has not been submitted yet. There are 11 that have been submitted through pre-screening, so staff is going to be working on that over the next week to process those and determine eligibility. We have 15 active applications right now that have come through pre-screening and have been sent out the continuing documentation. Probably about half of those, we just got from Ms. Lynn a couple of weeks ago, working with Ms. Lynn on that, so we're hopeful those are going to either go to encumbrance or decision at that point. There are eight inactive applications. I want to stress inactive does not mean that they are denied. Inactive is simply, hey, we've put in 15 days worth of time, we've called you, this is the list we need, we've got, you know, documents X, Y, and Z. Until we get those back, we're just moving inactive. We haven't denied you, but I've called you, you know, every day for three weeks, in some case, eight months, you know, kind of thing, calling and asking for information. You know, staff is wanting to make an effort to come down into the county more frequently as well, to provide that assistance for signatures and so forth. I know Isabella has gone out to individual homes, you know, to get signatures of people and things like that. So, we really want, you know, these folks to get encumbered and get the funding, you know, for their home. Those eight inactive, again, are, they know the list, or at any time, they can call us. Our number, contact stuff's on everything. So, if they're like, what did I owe you again? They can give staff a call and say, we need that, you know, your last two months of, you know, income statements, or W2, whatever it is that's remaining on their application, to then go forward. So, the direction from Florida Housing is right, you know, first qualified, first served, you know, first encumbered. So, you know, as soon as those folks are able to give us the information, we can move through to the encumbrance, you know, decision. And we can't do that until we have all their documents. So, that's why you have inactive, and we do have 10 denied applications. So, those are folks that don't qualify for the program. Encumbrance status, we're looking, we started with the 2223 fiscal year, so we have to have all that encumbered by June 30th, which with those 15 active applications, I think we're fairly confident that we're going to be able to make that.
Hold on one second, Quentin. I got a motion to extend.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Husband. Any opposition? Motion passed five and a, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So, you'll see right here on item three of that handout, we've currently got two projects encumbered, they're going to be going through the bid process now for the rehabilitation or construction, totaling $120,000 with one set aside for your very low and one for your low income thresholds. Obviously, those set asides in your L-HAP that you need to make also for construction and so forth. So, we're still looking at about $195,000 to be encumbered, and then obviously looking at those 15 projects as long as we can meet those set asides. You know, we're looking at having that handled by June 30th. So, I brought along staff, obviously, to introduce them, but also answer any questions you all may have. I'll do my best if I can too, but, you know, we were talking yesterday, I wanted to maybe do like a little handout like this, kind of monthly, at least for staff, if we can't be here, just to give an update on where we're at, if that's fine with y'all.
That's fine, that's fine. Any questions, Commissioners?
Of course.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Quentin, for coming today. So, the June 30th, that was my question, you just answered my question, was the June 30th date? So, we have $195,000 remaining until June 30th?
Correct. To encumber for that fiscal year 2223.
Right, okay. And is there anything we need to do on our end to try to get this money spent?
That's a great question. So, one of the things we talked about yesterday was actually, you know, there, some counties, they want to know which projects are in our district and things like that. If we have, you know, an applicant, we might, if you're okay with that, reach out and say, hey, we haven't heard from Mr. Johnson, you know, would you mind reaching out and say, we just need that one last item? That may be something to help within the future if we can't get a response. But, you know, we hate to see those folks go inactive, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's going to remind, you know, we send certified mail, things like that. It's part of what's in the process now, is we're going to send a certified mail with return receipt, so that they can just sign it, stick it in the folder, and send it right back.
So, your course of action would take the inactive and try to get those active is what we're trying to do?
Well, the ones we have active right now are the ones that are within inside that timeframe, the inactive ones are the ones that have lapsed past what's considered reasonable. They've been, they've had an application for eight months, and staff has called and said, okay, we still need your, you know, two months of egg statements, okay, we still need this, but, you know, we can't knock down the bank store and take those. So, it's going to, it takes the applicant to provide that, so we want to help the applicants that are wanting to get that done, you know. So, that's where we're going to work, is the ones that are still active, that are responding to phone calls and emails and so forth, right?
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thanks, sir. Any more questions, Commissioners? Yes?
So, as we wind down, in a good way, because Lynn's got more than she can do with veterans, and housing is a pain, so I'm glad that you're taking it off. We've actually caused some of your problem because we were trying to close out HHRP, so we've kind of robbed from the ship list, but it looks like if 20% of those on the list close or get encumbered, we're in good shape based on what's there. So, you've got plenty of potential. But going forward, assuming that the budget passes, looks like we're going to get triple the amount of money next year going forward. Is that what y'all are understanding?
I don't know how it's going to go through, whether that gets knocked, or, but I hear it's on the positive that, yeah, they're looking at.
A million a year.
That real Renaissance bill.
So, we'll have triple the.
So, yeah, we'll have a lot more work to do, right.
And a lot more to do, so that's right. And again, a lot of these folks, again, they're not getting assistance because they're rocket scientists, and, you know, you get elderly folks that need assistance or whatever, so they're going to need more assistance, either from family members or from y'all. So, that following up is extremely important, because some of them just can't, don't have the ability, they can't leave their house, they can't whatever to, so to get that extra little bit, so.
Yes, sir.
If it's just like this, and a lot of times, if you can let staff know, we'll let the Commissioners know, we'll reach out to them and see if we can assist them with whatever they need. And then you have some that just want money and they don't want to do anything, and again, they need to be in the inactive list. Eight months is way too long to play the game going back and forth.
Yes, sir, and that's why we did that. You know, it's not a denial, but it's just saying, like you said, hey, as soon as you're ready to play ball, we're here, but, you know, I'm going, we're not going to call you anymore, we're going to spend our time with the folks that are actively engaged and wanting to get the funding.
We appreciate it. All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Page one in my package, Mr. Chairman, we have a resolution, Sherry's got this.
Hold on, hold on, say something. Dr. Hart, you want to talk, say something about ARPC? You want to, come on. You got a, you got a question about ARPC? Yeah, go ahead. Go on, introduce yourself.
Pat Hardman, I'm on the Board of Long-Term Recovery.
Quentin, come on back up there just in case.
And I just wanted to make a couple of points. One, when you talk about streamlining, what hits my head is we're going to have more computers, and a lot of the folks that need ship are illiterate, and are, don't have access to computers, or really don't understand how to do the process. And I'm not on first line on this, but my staff reports back to us that they're having seen people that can't get into the queue because of the technology of trying to get there. And we need somebody in this county with the ship program, need some presence in the county. You have to handhold some of these elderly, some of these people are elderly, and they don't know how to use a computer. So, all I'm saying is just get more presence of the ship people in the county itself, so people have access to them, that's all.
That's a good point.
It's a great program, fantastic program. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Touch on it.
You can, yes.
So, actually, we were just having a meeting yesterday talking about it with Marcus, and one of the goals is to try to come out, work with staff, because part of the provision is we have to meet each applicant in person, you know, face-to-face. So, working through with scheduling, does it make sense to come down, once every other week, once a week, have a, we have a second computer where we can schedule time and meet with folks that if we need to keystroke it in those situations, you know, we'd be able if we need to keystroke it in those situations, you know, we'd be able to say, okay, name, we can, we've got the young staff, the young bucks that can go in and, and do the keystroking for that. So, um, that's one of the things we're looking at trying to, to make it more accessible for everybody. Obviously, the electronic version makes it a little bit, excuse me, makes it a little bit easier to, you know, keep everything right there with, you know, paper files. But absolutely right, another thing, transportation has been an issue. So I do a little bit, transportation is my background. You guys have Arc on the Gulf. That is the transportation disadvantaged provider for Gulf County. Working with them to pick up a ride, to bring someone to say, you know, the library, if that's where we are that particular day and say, hey, we're going to be there from, you know, 10 to four. Come on out, schedule a ride, we'll be there. We can do the keystroking. So we, that's all conversations we've had internally to address those very issues. Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Yes. All right, Sam.
Page one, and actually page one and two, Chair, you got, it's a resolution and a request to apply for grant.
So actually, page two is the resolution for FBIP. If you don't mind, I'll just read that by title. We already have the permission to apply, but we have not adopted a formal resolution. So this is a resolution of Gulf County Board of County Commissioners authorizing the filing of an application with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission for a Florida Voting Improvement Grant to improve Iola, Iola Landing Boat Grant.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, commissioners? On this, applying for this grant? All right, you entertain a motion to reapply for it? All right, motion by Commissioner McElmore.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Husband. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this grant, applying for this grant? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and all.
A Dr. Resley, which is, which is two. It's, it's, it's one and two are backwards.
So I read the resolution, yes, for them to adopt that. But the resolution is to apply. So yes. Are you just clarifying, make sure the motion is to adopt the resolution?
That's what I understood. Your motion was to adopt the resolution?
Yes, because I thought she said that the grant was already approved.
So there was discussion in 2024 about when FBIP came about to requesting to apply for Iola. So this is the formality, this grant requires a resolution to apply. So this is you adopting the resolution for the application to be submitted.
Okay, all right. I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I second. I'm making a motion.
Making a motion, okay. Got a motion by Commissioner McElmore?
And I'll, I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Husband. Any further board discussion on adopting the resolution? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed five and all. Thank you, ma'am.
Page one is for a different grant. This is a request to apply for a small cities, communities, development block grant. We are requesting to apply for the booster station project. This is to help fund the booster station at Jones.
All right, any questions, commissioners? I entertain a motion that we apply for the grant.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pridgen. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this one? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and all.
Page, page three.
Page three is, deals with the water main installation project as it's coming to a close. There's a change order for your consideration. It's an increase of $132,722.69 for ECSC. That'd be our recommendation to approve that.
All right, any questions, commissioners? For Mr. Smallwood. All right, so which is on the board?
So moved.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Pridgen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Husband. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? One in the public? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed five and all.
Could I add something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Minister Hammond, is there maybe next meeting, a meeting after that, can we get an update on that water? Do you mind to?
Yes.
We're around. I know, I know we've had a lot of stuff. It's a lot of moving parts on that thing. It just kind of catch us up on it.
Yes, sir.
Because it's a huge project and I think it's, it's a great project, just kind of catch us up on it next couple of things, if you don't mind.
Item four, and this is a follow-up to some of the last couple of commission meetings about the breakwater project and funding and applications and, and sources and that kind of thing. So we went back and did some research on the brick, which is the one we talked about most recently. And that's an acronym that stands for something. But anyhow, it's a FEMA funded project. And so how it works, and I told you, we, we've gone down this road in the past, not on the breakwater project, but we have gone down it in the past on other projects and not been successful. But we would apply to the state. Every city, every county, every tribal nation in the state can apply to the state for these funds. Then the state handpicks the ones they want to apply to FEMA for. So we don't even get a final say so if it gets, the application makes it. But in 2021, in the entire state, there were two projects funded. 2022 was a big year. There were seven projects in the entire state. And then 2023, there were two projects in the entire state. So it's something we chose not to spend our resources and our time on because it's a long shot. It's always been a long shot and there's obviously an entire state, not a lot of success on getting those funds. So, you know, that's the background on the brick. We have applied 15 different applications for the project. So again, we actively pursue grant opportunities that come on that we have a good chance at and will continue to do so. And we had some positive meetings last week and we're hoping for some good news in the budget as it comes out here in the next few days. So we'll keep you updated on that. Any other questions on breakwater?
Questions, commissioners?
So funding wise to date, that we've identified, uh, big pictures, a little over 28 million, we think we have available, almost 29 million. Again, we have the $10 million request into the state. We hope to hear some positive news on that. And, and the plan is if we get some positive news on that, we'll come back and ask for your permission to readvertise it so we can get going on the project.
Let, let me say this.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Clay works on this every day. I tell you, it consumes a large portion of his time and, and, and it's, it's never ending. And, and I requested Clay take a look at that bricks. I had some people that wanted us to inquire about that and, and, uh, he, he did. And he's looked at it before and, but, but Clay and Michael work on this project. It's, it's every day ongoing. It's, it's never. So, so they're continually working on this project diligently. So thank you, Clay.
That's, that's, that's probably why we don't get much of their time, huh?
Yes.
You got a question? You got a question? Yes, ma'am. Come on up to the podium, introduce yourself if you got a question on.
Good morning. Christie McElroy, Port St. Joe. Just curious, I attended in Tallahassee at DEP a session. They're changing some of the opportunities for the resilience program and opportunities for the counties and the cities to get extra funding for big projects. I just am curious if any of y'all have kind of gone back to 2025 as it pertains to the DEP resilience project to see if you can possibly exercise some of those resilient funds? Because it is about, you know, trying to be resilient, trying to make sure that the structures stay in place, make sure that they don't wash out into the Gulf of Mexico or wherever because of the fact that that creates problems as far as pollution as well. So.
We have, we have three, I think, three current projects with Resilient Florida, Funded by Resilient Florida. And we met with Commerce a month ago. And one of our projects is short on funding, so we asked them for more money on that one. So it is a program that we've been successful with and it is a good program. We'll continue to apply.
And, and Clay, just out of curiosity, have you looked at the latest changes as of January?
We have, and those applications are due this summer. I think they're due normally in the summer. So as it gets closer, we will certainly see what we can apply for and then come, you know, get permission from the board to, to move forward. But it's, I agree, it's a good program.
You, you may want to just look at and get some backup from Senator Simon and from our representative. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Just a follow-up. Before you come up here, about what, what, we went and had our time last week. I don't know if we were going to talk about it now, I guess now's kind of open it up. Total, totally impressed with Gulf County's presence in Tallahassee last week. A lot of you know that I, I'm from Tallahassee, I'm from here, Tallahassee both, but been in a larger thing and we're rubbing elbows with Dade County, Broward County, just like, hey, we're, we're here to play ball. We made a great presence. We had 13 meetings on one day. We went every, every floor of the Capitol. I mean, we wore the elevator out, meeting with staff from both our delegation, but delegations throughout the state. Commissioner Flea, time in here if you saw. It was, it was very beneficial for a little old Gulf County to be right up there with the big boys. And let me tell you what, we had a presence. We came out of there feeling real strong about the projects that we went after. Not only were doing staff that are current there, but we're looking down the road in case it, something may happen, the governor doesn't like it. We're already kind of trying to cover that base and that was very impressive. So I'd like to follow up with that. That was an awesome time and I think our, uh, our time was well spent up there and I think it's going to pay off. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, sir. I, I'm pretty sure Michael will say something on it.
You want to go ahead?
I just want to say that, that we've got a great team. And, and again, the, yeah, we're, we're pretty much up on resilient because they're funding $13 million worth of projects right now. If the governor's budget passes, we've got another 7.7 million in resilient in the current deal that would be available July 1. We got 3 million right before Christmas out of resilient on all of our projects and that'll be, we'll tie that in to the water and the waterline projects and the, and, and moving the, the wells off the coast inland to the, to the White City plan is part of that. But we, we have great lobbyists. They used our time efficiently. But again, it's all about the team and I don't know if anybody's been as successful, certainly not in the Panhandle, in the last five years about getting things across the finish line as, as our team. And so, yes, that was eye opening. It was a little bit stressful, uh, going from place to place. And, uh, again, so I told him to kind of cut back next time, a little bit, or space it out a little bit better. But, uh, I don't think we were late for any meetings, but we had, had, had a couple of close calls.
As long as we got Clay or Commissioner Pridgen, they, they know how to get around Tallahassee, I tell you. I'd shoot myself if I had to drive up there, but.
I, I don't like going back, believe me. Anybody will attest to that. It's not fun going back, but you have to.
Yeah, I'll just add that, uh, uh, that first day was, uh, it was, it was a long day. But we did have great meetings. And like I say, and I appreciate how the guys put the, how they put the, the meetings together because, you know, you know, we, we, we met with one group and then we met with another group to cover just in case the other group didn't come through for us. We met with another group. Well, the other group told us to go see this group, which we had already had scheduled. And we met with that group, said, well, did you go talk to them? And they said, we say, yeah, we talked to them. They told us to come see you. So hopefully, like I say, when the governor's budget come out, would be great news for, for Gulf County. But we, like I said, we had great meetings. Also, uh, to, to, to go back to, we had great meetings also in DC. We had, we had great meetings in DC and we got a chance to meet with Representative Dunn in DC. Leon County stole some of our time, but we still got a chance to meet with Representative Dunn. He, he, he said some good things and we actually, they're not doing, um, what they call it. I know what they call it now. What they used to call it, um, they're doing community projects now.
You call it, uh, uh.
Appropriation?
They call it member projects now because it's nice earmarks is what they used to call.
It was a nice, uh, community project. And so, uh, we're hoping they're going to try to get, uh, to apply for a couple of community projects, uh, for, for the, for the community. So that was a, that was a great, that was a great thing. Uh, you guys can chime in if you want to, but I, I thought Tallahassee and Dunn in DC was, uh, was great meetings and we still, we're looking forward to some, uh, some great things for, for Gov. County coming down on that, so.
You good? Y'all good?
Yeah. Just want to say too, Mr. Chairman, that was a great meeting we had with Congressman Dunn. Very productive and for the time that we did get, get with him. And the biggest takeaway for me was the discussions afterwards with the staff on the Gulf County Court, the old Gulf, Gulf County Courthouse. And we're definitely working on that. I'll bring that up later on, just want to make sure we, we noted that as well.
Yes, sir.
So going forward, the, the Cobra Push is going to be the, the, the big lift. And again, that's our entire focus on the federal side. But the, the only positive I'd come out of Leon County stealing our time. And again, that was, uh, that, that was quite interesting, the different, uh, the different priorities that they had. The only priority that they had that worth a flip, in my opinion, was the post office issue. And again, I, I think that we, we actually had it hit home here that we're having to send people to, to actually hand deliver grants because the, all of our mail goes to Pensacola. All of their mail goes to Jacksonville and it's taken a week to get a, a, a letter from Port St. Joe to Tallahassee. And it's, and it's screwing folks up and it's, 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 it's out of control. And it's been out of control for a while. It tried to make efficiencies and again, the post office is a horribly run organization. I totally get it. They got to do something, but what they've done is made it even worse. So we might want to send the congressman a letter that says we need, we need something to, to happen in a positive way. I mean, the, in the old days, if you had a local letter, you put it in the local box. It didn't go anywhere. It stayed right here in Port St. Joe. There's no reason to send a letter from here that's going to Marvin Avenue to, to Pensacola and let it run around for three or four days and come back. So if we could draft a letter and the board send it in, in hopes of, of speeding up the, the process at the post office, that'd be good. The postal commissioner resigned last night too, so that may be a positive thing. A little joy, I think, is that, something like that.
A motion to adopt a letter to send out.
Send to the congressman, please.
All right. I entertain a motion to adopt the letter, send to Congressman Dunn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I got a motion by Commissioner Husband.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed five and all.
Page four, five, and then page six and seven. This is a follow-up and I'll let Brad do a little talking, but I just want to read you the brass tacks of the change of the utility permit. And this, this has been discussed for a while because of contractors fouling us up. The main gist is the applicant understands that said roads in unincorporated Gulf County shall not be cut or dug without prior approval of the Gulf County Public Works Director and the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. In the event that said applicant causes damage to the unincorporated Gulf County roads and right of way during construction, a fine of $1,000 shall be enforced and the applicant will pay all the cost Gulf County has incurred to make repairs. The applicant's right to make further permit application will be denied. Again, it, it, it goes across the spectrum. You know, we have a constant issue with the water stuff and the sewer stuff in the city, but, but, uh, these outside contractors, uh, I think they work in the MediaCon that just did the damage in, in Oak Grove that, uh, again, and I think we've had some in Gaffair and different places where they're, they've destroyed an alley in Beacon Hill to one, brand new paved one. So our deal is we're going to fix it. We want our contractor to fix it first rate and, and we're going to lean them and until they pay their costs and get back in good graces, they can't work on our right ways. graces, they can't work on our right ways. That ought to get their attention. So Brad's got some more information, and if y'all got any questions.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
So yes, sir. So we, we adopted this language and to, to come in there. And we also have a, a resolution there to go with it that needs to be subject to Mr. Novak's review that we would like to book. But also, the current, uh, utility fee permit is $25. Uh, that won't cover none of our costs. We would like to raise that to 150 because the Public Works Director will need to, uh, go to these sites also. So we need to get some of that cost back for him, him right now. And this is the first time we've put this kind of language in this permit to tie these contractors down to when they, when they, uh, damage our roads.
So Brad, let me ask a question. So you, so you're gonna help, Mark, you're gonna jump in and help. So if they're doing a road out there, you're gonna go out there and say, yeah, this is where you're putting it. I'm gonna put eyes on it and make sure if we're boring, we, we do need, we need the cost to cover that. That makes a good sense.
That's right. Yeah. And the new resolution now, they'll contact, uh, Mark before they even start.
The, the, the other problem is even when they don't cut our road, they're using these boring companies that are not going deep enough, and they're causing the hump in the road. So it's the same scenario. So it's, it's again, everybody's trying to cut corners. And, uh, I actually somewhat sympathize with, with one of the boring companies that, you know, but, you know, he tried to do right. But at the end of the day, I think that was on a private road. It was not ours. But at the end of the day, the, uh, they're, if they go too shallow, you get a hump. And a brand new road. And that's very disappointing.
Mr. Chairman, I actually had two questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Brad answered the first one, and Michael brought up the second one. So the processing fee was the first one, then Brad answered that one. Uh, the second question I had was on the boring plans. Do we need them to submit a boring plan?
They, we currently make them. So I review that plan to make sure there's all borings and the depth of them and all that.
Okay. And we're using DOT standards for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I said, yes, sir, I'm good.
And that, and that gets recorded at the clerk's office once they get approved.
Okay.
I, I got something, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So Brad, that's like Red Bull Island. That's where they done the board and everything. I got all the dills in the road.
Yes.
Is that what caused, that's what caused all that?
Same part. Yes. Okay, yes.
So, so if you approve the application, and then, uh, I'll ask you to approve the resolution that's following that.
All right. Also, what's on the board on the application? To approve?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Pritchard.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Michael Moore. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? All right. Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed five and all. Resolution.
Which one did we do? The application or the resolution?
The application.
We just did application.
Now we need to do the resolution, please.
That would be for the attorney's review, correct?
Pending, pending, pending his review, but I...
Brian.
Yes.
Brian.
By title, please. Let's not read over.
Let Mr. Novak take it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just know one thing Brad and I discussed. There's just a few things we're gonna amend through attorney review. One of them was the application fee. I think you wanted to include in that as well, going from $25 to $100. Um, the $1,000 fine.
150.
50, I apologize.
150.
Yeah, 150, like I said. And some other minor edits, but other than that, sir, we'll be ready to adopt that.
We don't need to read it.
No, sir. It, it's just by title. It's just, it, it's the resolution to update our utility permit. So it's fine, sir.
All right. What's on the board on the resolution?
So, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Macron.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Michael Moore. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed five and all.
I think we might be ready for bids. No, we're not. I got excited. I saw you bring a big, I apologize, Don, false alarm. So give it 15 more. Um, on page eight, which is item seven in my packet, this was Sherry's email last night to the Florida Doge team, uh, certifying our compliance, uh, with those things. I'm, I'm gonna have her follow up with an actual letter. Uh...
So you wanna go, you wanna go, you wanna get the history of how we, how we got to this?
Yeah. So, so we were actually in, uh, Tallahassee, uh, Thursday and Fri- uh, Thursday, excuse me, Tuesday, Wednesday of last week. And, sorry? Oh, and, uh, and the emails came out in the middle of the night. And you got one, and I got one the next morning. And there was a lot of hand wringing and crying and gnashing of teeth and folks freaking out with the cities and the counties and the whatnot. So we actually had that briefing at eight o'clock on Wednesday morning. And, and again, and some of us was like, good, we don't have a problem. So then it was announced that Bay County was gonna be the, the guinea pig and, and do the medium sized county. My suggestion is that we volunteer to be the small county guinea pig, uh, and, and invite those to come do our review. We'll be the first ones. Uh, Gulf County's in great fiscal shape. Again, our answers were no on all of the five requests that they had. Uh, and, and I think you'll find probably, even though that there's some waste, fraud, and abuse, especially in some of the bigger places and things that, that may, they might find questionable, I think they'll find much more problems with these small cities. Uh, you know, they're abandoning one of the cities in, in, uh, in northwest Florida, excuse me, northeast Florida, uh, the latest legislature is. But, you know, a lot of them aren't doing their audits and not keeping up. And again, some of it's staff, and they're small and whatnot. But, uh, I think we ought to welcome them to, to come do a doze audit on us.
Go ahead. Yes.
I think it's a great idea. Um, anytime we take the test first, we, we set the bar. So, uh, they're, they'll be right over here in Bay County. They can come right over to Gulf County. It's a small county. I think that's a, an excellent idea, especially this time of year before we even go into this next budget session. Because they're gonna be, this is a whole new process for them, my understanding. Uh, they have some, a rubric for us to look at. And, you know, that will be, that will be good for us. You know, we set the bar. I, I think it's an awesome idea.
Yeah. Yeah. I have no problem with it at all.
So if it's good with the board, we're gonna have a motion, we'll reach out and, and, uh, and ask them to do a dozer view.
Absolutely.
All right. I intend motion. Go ahead and reach out and get started. I got a motion by Commissioner Macron.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Husband. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and all.
One of the other things we had great meetings on was the floating dry dock in Tallahassee. And again, uh, we would like the board to authorize us to, to submit an application in the next few days or in the next week to possibly be on the April, uh, Triumph meeting. Uh, I got a, a copy last night late. I sent to, to Jim and Clay. And, and we've got to add some changes. I'm not necessarily satisfied with the, the final bottom, bottom line number. But the, in all likelihood, this would be a joint application between Gulf County and the Port Authority. Uh, we've been having some good discussions with the Port Authority and their folks on teaming together as a, as a joint application. Again, I want to say that as, as maybe because, you know, they've got to have a quorum to actually approve it. And I don't want to slow it down. But if we can work together, uh, and then pull some of their resources, uh, maybe even some of their previous committed funding toward this project, it might help it get across the finish line easier. So, uh, contingent upon final administrative review and legal review, if we could, uh, get permission to apply, uh, for the, for the, what we'd call the final application.
Yes, sir.
Jim, could you come up a minute? Talk about it. Are you, are you spearheading this? Can, can hear? I know. I knew the answer to that before I asked. My fault.
Thought I was gonna get away.
No, Jim, not.
First of all, let me echo what you said. Your, your work up in Tallahassee, walking around, it's already paid dividends. Uh, the, uh, Rural Renaissance Bill in the Senate, uh, while you were there, well, shortly after you were there, it passed 39-0 to move that, uh, that agenda forward, giving rural communities a whole lot of money in infrastructure, education, and then those kind of things. Uh, it, it even went further because yesterday, uh, the Commerce Committee in the House incorporated the Rural Renaissance Bill in their Rural Communities Bill. And the Commerce Committee met yesterday, and it was approved unanimously. People from all over the state, uh, were there, uh, came up supporting it. This is truly a Rural Renaissance year. If we're ever gonna have a chance to get some money and do something really big, this is it. And you guys certainly played a part yesterday. And that boots on the ground up there, you can't beat that, especially when it comes from the elected officials, because they, they, they really value more than anyone else. So, uh, congratulations on doing a good job with that. It's a, it's, it's a good thing. Um, and just one other thing, I'll talk about the floating dry dock. Uh, the annex, uh, up at the Gulf CI has opened, and they're now hiring people. That's gonna be 140 more jobs by the time that's filled out. The floating dry dock, as you know, we applied for that back in 2021. I kind of floated around. It's a, it's been updated, uh, needed to be updated because we, we wanted to, uh, wanted to get rid of the, the cyclical nature of just outfitting, uh, ships. Uh, sometimes you got a lot in the, that are up to be done, and then you're gonna have periods where it's down. What the floating dry dock MOR does, it creates a maintenance overhaul repair facility that's there every day, consistent jobs, consistent jobs that are higher paying than the outfitting jobs. And more likely, local people are gonna get them because that's long-term, uh, long-term work, not sometimes being laid off. You know, we phased down, uh, uh, about 18 months ago to where hardly anybody over there. There's 600 people over there now. There won't be 600 people when this is all said and done. But 400 would be nice, and, or 350 would be nice. And the, the maintenance overhaul repair, uh, facility is what makes that happen. Uh, we, as Mr. Hammond said, we have a, uh, we have a draft. We need to rework it a little bit. Uh, we, as, as part of knowing this Rural Renaissance money's there, we may want to shift some, the way we get the money. So, uh, we gotta make it more palatable to, uh, the, uh, Triumph folks. They, they don't like to give out a lot of money, more than a certain percentage. So we're working with all those. Uh, it, it, it's, uh, still, we can put a good, a good application together. I think it'd be better application, uh, in that we will be able to maybe make some other funding sources in there.
Question. So timeline next meeting is what part of April? How, how, is it first of April, middle of April?
It's the end, isn't it?
When is the meeting, the meeting at Triumph?
Well, we won't, we won't know. We'll, we got, first of all, we gotta get the application in. And then staff will look at the application, and then they will say whether they can agenda it for April 23rd's the next meeting. Uh, i- if not, it looks like June 13th would be the next available meeting. But, uh, it's, a lot of it's dependent on, the sooner we get the application, the more chance we got to, uh, to be on the agenda a- a- April 23rd. You know, they, staff have to review it. They have a limited staff, a lot of projects. So the sooner we get the application, the better chance of getting on April 23rd. If not, it'll be June 13th.
So you've got the skeleton already for the, the application. Um, the reason I'm saying that is, is can we get, can I get a copy of it? Look at it? I just, I know it's a long one. There's a couple of...
It's not really all that long, because by the time you go through all the, just the checkbox questions, you get down to the end of it, and it breaks it down on what's important.
It's 70 something pages, I think, on the email. The gist is, it's, it's, a lot of it's bullet points, you know?
I'd, I'd like to get together a few people too before, if you don't, if y'all guys don't mind, because I talked about this before, because of how important it was, and, and the people that are on that board. Because I've already reached out to some of them to talk to them, you know, about the process. And there's a couple of things they're looking at. If we'd have had this in place in 17, when you first started this project, if we had started it back then, and they'd have funded it, we'd have went with it at a cheaper rate. Right now, we would have a line waiting to get in here because of the, the size ship, and there's no one doing it between Mobile and Tampa. We talked about this before. This is a niche for Gulf County, and it needs to be in this grant application.
Could be true.
We preached it to the people in Tallahassee. We need to preach again in that application that this is, could be our niche. This is, we, we are not big enough for a big, large commercial port. We're not, that's not us. We, we're not big enough. We are big enough to do this, to bring these medium sized ships in that are tending this oil rigs out there. That's my understanding. Okay? So, and that is a steady line. Had we had that in 17, and they'd have funded this, right now with all the shutdowns, and now they're bringing them back, we would have a line out the door. Not only those, but the ones that Eastern's currently building. So there is that. There is gonna be an educational component. And if we do team with the port across, I know you talked about that, there is a chance to put marine science in there because it's a different industry. Okay? Marine, everything you do on top of that water or off that water has to be done differently because of saltwater environments and all that. That's, that's something that we can do. We've got to build that. We can't say there's a certification port that we know right now for that trade. Okay? So, but that needs to be in there, and it needs to be explained. This is a good grant if we put it that way. Let's, let's get it going. I mean, let's, let's go with it.
Well, and you, you've, you've correctly assessed the situation. The, uh, Triumph is certainly more, uh, likely to approve, uh, applications when they have a training and education component, and they have a demonstrated record of doing that. So that, that's, that's, uh, a, a good direction for us to go.
And not to cry wolf. But if you look at the number of dollars that we've gotten for Triumph so far compared to, uh, and I'm not saying Walt Cudd didn't do a good job. They've done a great job. But if you compare the size and who was actually, we had our, our bay roped off because of, because of this oil spill. They didn't.
Yeah.
And they've gotten the majority of the money, and we haven't.
Yeah.
So we, that is something that needs to be strongly...
We've gotten, uh, 10 million in mostly what I just said, education and training programs. That's what, what most of them have been. Uh, we have a $15 million one out the Port Authority has that prob-, you know, in all likelihood, won't be used. That's the dredging one, uh, that this project doesn't need the dredging. So I, I, I just say so. They really have given us no money for econ-, not true economic development. Uh, but again, uh, put the education component with the true economic development, uh, I think that's a winner.
And we'll, we'll tie it in. We'll talk about Rural Renaissance Bill later on, because that's, that's important. Because one of those is infrastructure and, and economic development in our counties. So...
That's right.
Thank you.
Question? Good?
I saw you was in the picture. So that, that was, I, I know you were there because you were in the picture with the Senate President. So it looked, it looked pretty good at you, at your days. We had to leave you right before y'all had you.
Yeah, I looked at it. Anyway, yeah. Anything else?
We're good.
I'm gonna have to get something done with my hearing aids. I got them cracked up, folks. I don't know. I just, I need a new ones. All right, thank you.
All right, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Get down the ground for them hearing aids.
You, you could show us what hearing aids cost. I, I mean...
So we got, we need a motion to apply for the Triumph.
So, so moved. Yes, please.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchard, second by Commissioner Macron. Uh, any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? On the public? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. State your name, address for the record, please.
Morning, gentlemen. I'm Deb Mays from the Gulf County Citizens Coalition. I think this is a wonderful application. We support it completely. I just have one question that I didn't quite understand. Is, um, the Port Authority going to be trying to overturn their $15 million dredging, dredging grant into the dry dock program? You said you were working with the Board Authority. Um, we know they still have a current dredging grant. And he mentioned kind of 15 million a little bit, but I'm not quite sure I understood. I'm curious.
So I don't want to speak for the Port Authority, but we have had, uh, good discussions about a portion of that potentially, or maybe even all of that, but certainly a portion of that going towards this project. Again, we have a willing partner with the Port Authority. It, it doesn't necessar-, it's not theirs to, to transfer. So, so we're hoping with a joint application potentially, and Clay, correct me if, if that's not what our discussions have been, that, uh, some or all of that may be transferred. So instead of us asking for, I'm just throwing out a number now, to say 50 million, uh, we might ask for 40, and they say, okay, 10 of this could go toward that. But, but yes, we've, we've had some discussions that I don't know that the Port Authority's had a quorum to vote on, but about doing a joint application, and some are all of that money potentially going towards this project.
Awesome. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
I hope I didn't step on anybody's toes with that statement, but I think that was our, that was our discussions.
All right. Anyone else on this? Yes, ma'am.
Kristy McElroy.
Thank you.
Uh, Port St. Joe. I don't know if any of y'all have been over when Eastern Shipbuilding, when they let out in the afternoons. Um, they cut through the parking lot at Duran's. And then, because there's so much gridlock. So, and then they come around, come up, I guess it's Marina Drive or whatever, in order to hit the stoplight. There's, there's just sort of like chaos. Um, I know that our mayor has addressed some of that. But when you're going out for these grants, and I'm all for local people having local jobs, but we need to make sure that we have the other infrastructure that matches the entity that you want to bring in for those local jobs. So all that I would ask is you make it, you know, holistic and comprehensive as far as how you move these people out. Um, because right now, it's chaos. So just would like y'all to make sure you include that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let, let me say this, Chairman. And I, I've been down that road when they, when they let out. I've been going to Panama. And, uh, and it's not perfect by no means. But there's always things we have to work out, especially that kind of personnel you're letting out. And, you know, alternative road at some point, I'm sure is gonna come down. Uh, but, but, and I've heard this talk, to say that we don't need Eastern is crazy. I tell you, I've heard, I've heard, I've heard local officials say, we don't need Eastern. I think we're crazy. I, I think we do need Eastern. I think we need this floating dry dock. It gives our kids, our grandkids, a chance at, at, at jobs that, that they need, that we need in this community. And, and to say we don't need them, I, I think is foolish, very foolish. And, and, and is there bugs? It's gotta be worked out. I'll be the first to say there, there is, because it, traffic can be bad. It can be bad. But, but that, that can be resolved. I mean, any, anytime you, 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 you have change, or you're moving forward, you're gonna have problems you have to overcome. That's anything we do. I mean, look, look at Tindall. Look at, look at the flyover. They finally got them open, but it was tough for a while, guys. But, but I, I'm 100% behind Eastern. I think this floating dry dock's a great, great, great win for this community.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. We got a motion by Commissioner Pritchard, second by Commissioner Macron to apply for the application. Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed five and all.
All right. Second time may be a charm. Are we, are we ready on bids? Okay.
First bid is 2425-11 Playground Equipment. ET and T, just, sorry, distributors. Their bid is 50,000. Uh, Florida Recreational Products, they have two options. The first option is 40,606.50. Um, their option two is 49,999. Um, Playmore Recreational Products, their bid is 50,000. Playworks Placets, um, their bid is 50,000. Core Cat Playground and Site Amities, their bid is 41,228. Sunters Recreation LLC, their bid is 48,775.96. And the last one for this one is Bliss Products and Services Inc., their bid is 48,418.40.
We, we need to table these and look at them.
All right. Motion to table Gaskin Park Playground Equipment. Bid. Got a motion by Commissioner McElmore?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Husband. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on table any of these grants?
I, I understand that. Uh, we went and looked at some playground equipment. Oh, my goodness. It is so expensive. For the littlest swing is $20,000. And this, it's, it is, we're in the wrong business again. This is nothing wrong. But then it is, I understand tabling it because it's, there's, bids are coming in high because that stuff has gone tremendously. I don't know how schools do it with putting in playgrounds like that. So, yeah.
That's what, uh, that's what Clay told me when it first started. He's like, you realize how expensive that is? I said, I guess I don't. I said, I guess I don't. He said, go look at this and this is how much it costs. I went and looked at it, I was like, oh, my goodness. But, yeah, it's very expensive.
All right. So I have a motion by Commissioner McElmore, second by Commissioner Husband. Any opposition to the motion to table? I motion passed five of them.
Next bid is 2425-12 for the White City Water Plant Automatic Transfer Switch. Mathis Electric Supply Company, their bid is 34,375.75. ECB Solutions LLC, their bid is 42,000. Technology International, Inc., their bid is 14,300. And Saddle Engine Service, Inc., their bid is 34,948.23.
If we could turn these over to Mr. Butler and we'll come back later before the meeting and see if we can award.
The last bid we have is 2425-13 for the pre-engineered metal building. First bid is Mintsey Construction Unlimited LLC. Their bid is 66,000. GeoFlora Group LLC, their bid is 96,200. Monolith Construction Panhandle, their bid is 123,575.62. I messed that up.
Say that again.
I like the 123.
I'm sorry. Holly Development Corp., their bid is 92,420.23. Endling Construction and Engineering, Inc., their bid is 123,523. Southern Construction Service, their bid is 79,549.
Same thing. We'll come back, let Don look at these and come back later in the meeting, see if we can award.
Thanks, sir.
Chairman, that's all I've got at this time.
So you got Sheriff, you got anything?
I'm good, sir.
All right. Ms. Norris, you got anything? Thank you, ma'am. All right. All right. Board members.
Mr. Chairman, could I? My firefighters, they've been back here for an hour and 15 minutes and, Mike, could, I'm gonna get the chief to bring him, bring him up.
Yes, sir.
I could.
Chief Bear, come on up and then you can help me introduce them and.
Yep.
You have the floor.
Randy just told me to do that and I slipped my stack away. Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to come today. The population of the United States is approximately 340 million. Out of that, there's approximately 1.4 million professional firefighters, and I'm happy to announce that we have added three more to our department here lately, and I would like to introduce them to you. Lieutenant Freer. This is Lieutenant Sarah Freer. She is firefighter one. She is also my fire safety officer, and she is in third in command of the Cape. When I'm not there and my captain's gone, she's in charge, and she does outstanding job. So, second of the lead. Gary. This is Gary Freer. He currently became firefighter one. He also just got promoted to driver engineer. Some people call it pump operator, but I'm old school. It's driver engineer. He was one of the first two that South Gulf fires ever had in that rank structure. He's also firefighter one. This is Derek Bergholt, and he is just completed firefighter two class. He, he comes to us from a department in Arkansas. I forgot the name. Anyways, he served 13 years there and he rose to the rank of captain, and he recently went to the fire college and took a pretty strenuous week of training, challenged firefighter two and, and passed it. Derek comes to us with what I call a Sears Christmas catalog, about that thick of, of certificates and training. So people ask me from time to time what it takes to be a firefighter, and I tell them there's four things in my, in my humble opinion. It's training, trust, and teamwork. But even more important than that to me is you have to have a servant's heart to do this job. It takes a special person who's willing to put strap on 50 pounds or 60 pounds bunker gear, kick a door in and come find you out of a, in a fire. And so we are very blessed, not only in South Gulf, but I think the entire county. And when I talk about servant's heart, you can just look around this room. I have a commissioner that's a firefighter. I have an administrator that's a firefighter. I have EMS director that's firefighter, and there's some in the crowd. And so we are very fortunate in this county to have these people, and I am blessed to have the folks that I have on my department. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce them to you. We have five more that are in the pipeline right now training. I should have another one out in about 45 days, and then I had four just start in January. So anyways, I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce you to our firefighters and, and thank you for your support.
All right. Yes, sir. We, we want to say thank you guys for your support. Thank you guys for all you do. It's not, it's not an easy job, and we know that, and we appreciate you guys being there when the, when that, when that time is, and we appreciate you guys being there. So thank you for all you do.
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Oh, just to remember, guys, these guys are volunteers and, and they give their time and, and tremendous job, Mike, that you've done in that department. My hat's off to you. And I know it's been some bumps in the road. I mean, you know, we, we, we getting there and, and, but, but this department has come, come a long way, and I appreciate you, Mike, and the job you're doing. Thanks to these guys, these volunteers. Thank y'all.
I appreciate that. I tell all my officers leadership's a full contact sport, so you best be ready.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Moving on down to board business. Commissioner Husband, you want to go first?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got a couple of things today. Clay, Aaron and I are working together on the playground equipment for Beacon Hill, so I would like to, since you broke the ice last meeting, I'd like to be second one on the, on the list here for our $20,000. Right now, Aaron has this, what I have come up with is some possibilities to be bid out. So she's working on that for us, but if I can go ahead and get a, some approval from the board to use that $20,000 for Beacon Hill playground equipment, use my $20,000 there.
I think, I think you already, I don't think we need a motion. I think you got it.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, you got it. I think you've got to go.
I took it. We were splitting. It's, it's what y'all voted on, but.
Okay, okay.
It's in your pot.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. The, over, and thank y'all for the bid on, or the, the resolution for Stonehill Creek too. It's in pretty, pretty rough shape there. The Everstreet Community Paving Project is back on track and going very, very well. Progress. I just wanted to ask Clay, how much time do we have until it's complete or everything on schedule? It looks to be on schedule, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, the, the, what I call the slow work is pretty much done, the patching and things. You know, the paving will go fast, so I don't see any, I don't foresee any problems with that one finishing on time.
Very good deal. Yeah, it's, it's going very, very good so far. On the Old County Courthouse, we met with Congressman Dunn and his office and staff in Washington a few weeks ago. Great, great meeting. We also talked about Cobra, as Michael talked about earlier, which is another important topic that we're trying to tackle here again. And as far as the courthouse goes, we're waiting here back from the Department of Interior. I've got some emails out, and so we should have a path moving forward here very, very soon. The Road 5 prison learning issue is going good. It's a constant check and constant battle, but it is, it is going, it has gotten a whole lot better. Mark has the gun range property cleared and it looks really, really good. Also, Mark's workout items this month have been, I think almost all of 386 is, is mowed with the mower max, and so that's a much safer road now on those curves especially. Guard rails have been replaced, I think, two Fridays ago. Tree cutting in Stonehill Creek and Everstreet areas. We picked up a lot of concrete rubble from Road 5. Ditches in Beacon Hill, multiple, multiple ditches there, trying to get that fixed. Continuing work in City of Weewee, constantly there. On the Chapel Lane Drainage Product, uh, Project, Mark did have a meeting with the homeowners there and the, and the property owners. We don't have a final solution, but we're getting very, very close on that one, so thank you for doing that. Mr. Raymond did get me the bids, and I've talked to Clay about that. We're going to get that settled up and just checking with Aaron on that as well for the Everstreet Bike Round, Harley siding and, um, thank the, the staff for getting the courthouse parking lot strip looks much, much better. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I got some stuff for our county, and I guess you get one in Mr. Hammond. So when we toured, you passed on? When we toured, when we were in Tallahassee yesterday, uh, yesterday, sorry. When we were in Tallahassee last week, we were able to set up a meeting at Leon High School because I talked about that fire academy they had. This is their first semester. They completed the first semester. They're into their second semester, and we got to go tour that and see how it's going. It's reported, they're doing pretty good. They've got 16 active in that class, and I think the instructor said that they have two of them that have already signed contracts with the city of Tallahassee. For when they graduate, they're going to hire them and finish up their fire too and all that. So it's a, it's a big program, and so I wanted you all to have it and, and talk about maybe next steps on this. And next steps would be meet with our local, our Gulf County School System, Assistant Superintendent Curriculum, and bring in Gulf Coast. We've, I've already had initial meeting with them and they're all on board with it, but then start hammering out timelines with them on how we're going to do it because they'll be, be grant funded, even though we're talking about the Triumph is, we don't get it. This would be a Triumph fall for sure, an easy one. It's not an expensive Triumph. And then looking at the White City, the old White City Fire Department. Mr. Hammond, if you could get, and Mark, if we could get together and try to get with Chief Rogers on getting that cleaned out so we can bring the Florida State Fire College people in and say, hey, what does it look like to put a fire college in here? And then by next year, hopefully we'll go for an appropriation through the state. I think it'll be a, a no, no brainer with our local delegation on putting in a fire academy there. Ultimate goal would be to have a class in the morning or in the afternoon, would, would do like we're doing, they're doing now with, I guess, Lana, doesn't she do that, Mike? She teaches in the morning. We want down here, do the same thing with the, with the fire instructor. But they also have volunteers that come in to help out. They have eight people that come in. I think they had, what, seven, seven instructors there? They were like drill sergeants with them. And I, please jump in there if y'all want to say anything about it. They have a good program going, and we can replicate that here. I think everybody agrees we can do it. It's going to take about two years to get that first class in, but it's going to solve some of the problems that we have in our smaller, in our smaller stations, get more certified people there, so.
Yeah, just add, Tallahassee State College was also there, and they spoke well of, of the program, and they would love to come to Gulf County or tie us in with, with Gulf Coast. So it was a great conversation. Like I said, they started out with a, with a big, it was, it was at least five ladies that was also in the class, so that was a great, out of the, the initial 26 that they started with. But anything that, that can help those, help our kids and help them get to the firefighter, that, that would be great. I think it's, it'll be a great program if we can get it up and running. Yeah. Great.
Uh, next I have for you. This I found, um, we, we talk about ISO ratings and how they impact insurance and all. A friend of mine who's also a firefighter out to the beaches, he plays on the internet a lot. He really is into the internet. He found this, and I have not seen an article as detailed, but it's simple. So when our consumers talk about ISO ratings and how you get them and then how it affects your insurance, well, may or may not, this little hand, this, this little guide right here is, is very quick, is very brief, and it talks about how you score them. I think it's very informative as we move forward down the road, trying to, you know, bring some of our other sta, you know, we've got some that are doing knocking home runs with their ISO ratings right now. We're, we're doing good. As you'll see here, how much money we're saving in those departments for those communities. So if you happen to live in one of those, it's good, so let's bring those others up, and that's a goal, I think, down the road is, I know that was a goal at one time, is to, just to get all of our, our, our ISO ratings up in our department. It's going to be hard. We have some challenges basically because of demographics, and you can see that in this form. I thought it'd be good for y'all to have just to, just to look at it. Another thing I have, you know, thinking out of the box, we're 100 years, we're having celebrations and all that. I talked about it briefly, I think, I know some people kind of laughed, but they kind of may like it, is a coin. And so I want to pass this around. This is Appalachia Coal Franklin County, their, their Chamber of Commerce. So it's like a little token you give someone who comes and visits you and stuff like that. So it's got a logo of, of course, an oyster in Franklin County. That's, that's a big sign for them. And on the back, it's a, it's a compass because a lot of their navigations and stuff out of Appalachia Coal, it meant a lot to them, talked about what they do in their community. And so what I was thinking is, is I know Sylvia's not here and I'll talk with her when she gets back, Clay, is if, what if we have some of these produced for us for our 100th celebration, and we take this on one side and then her 100-year celebration, we already have the artwork for it, and order some of these for us. If we have somebody coming in that was doing a presentation for us, I know we had a young man that came and, and gave the pledge for us, well, you get a token. This is something that's two or three years down the road. A lot of cities and communities do that. It's a keepsake for us, just a thought. If, if, I'm going to pass that around, look at it. I know y'all, some of y'all are golfers, they've seen it, but I think it's something that we could possibly do, Clay, since Sylvia's not here. I don't know with her budgets and all, last minute, but, and she may already be doing this.
I think she is, but yes, that's a good idea.
Okay.
You know what happens once you, you said, you, you don't mess it up now because you said pass this around, so you know it got to go to the clerk, so you're not getting it back. You should, you should have had about.
Should have had several. I only had that one.
You want me to hold on or you want me to pass it on?
Give it to me.
Okay. Some things that we talked about, the rural Renaissance that came up, there's four prongs to that that I'm thinking, and I think they may have added the fifth one in. I don't know the sheriff's, the sheriff's department may have added that fifth prong in there, but the four prongs, three of them, I think we, we stand a good chance to getting funding for. My understanding, and please, if someone has something different, these are going to be a separate allocation from the ones that we really did. They may co-mingle, but this is above and beyond. Basically, our Senate President is saying, hey, we, we're going to address our smaller counties, our small rural counties. Like we said before, we haven't heard that before. I think it's a time to take advantage of it. So I'd ask possibly that, Mr. Hammond, that we could set some committees or set your staff, let us know your staff, and maybe assign staff to each one of those prongs so we've got the, the things covered. So when they come out, you know, we're going to be the first for those. We want to be the first applying for these things that come out, these funds. Let's be at the front of the, we already know what we want. Each one of our commissioners has a list that we could, you know, as they designate, let's say someone over the, the roadside of it, because we're big up, it's going to be road infrastructure, who that person is, and that we can say, hey, we've got these three or four, I know we know those now with our normal things, but is there a way you think we can just, let's talk about it a little bit, getting, getting ahead of that curve on that, on that Senate bill? Because it's, it's passing. Because it's, it's passing. It came through the first time. Uh, I mean, it's, it's going to happen. So I think it would be money, time well spent for us getting ahead of, ahead of that one. And follow up with, Matt's not here today, on the, um. On the expenditures for fire calls, we're about halfway through this first year. Kind of kept my next, but next meeting. Catch up with all that.
So, so, uh, this quarter be half expended? Is it half expended this quarter or are we nine months? And I've, I've lost track. We started it before. Ha- half in this, so, so March thirtieth will be the halfway point. I think, I think it'll give us a great idea halfway in the, in the budget year.
In the budget year. And I was going to say, so April meeting, by the end of April, we could have some numbers. On that following up and, um, and, and thank you, Mark, for the work you've done. Uh, Clay, any follow up on Gulf Fair, that little bad patch?
We got the prices for it. And I, I think, we talked about, I think I gave it to you. If I didn't, I apologize. We did get the prices back and it was, um, in the sixty thousand dollar range was one fix and eighty thousand was the other fix. Obviously the eighty thousand would be the long-term fix.
Commissioner, there's, Commissioner, there's a, there's a, I don't know if you've been in Gulf Fair, but somehow. There's a little stretch of Gulf Fair that has never been repaved. It's literally got the mill, where you take the millings down. It's literally that little corner there. I don't know why there's stories, you know, there's all kinds of stories of that, but if, if you would, hopefully we can get that one going down the, down the road. Because that's, it's, it's, it's pretty bad right there if you could, uh, looking at that one. Okay? And that's, that's all I have. Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner McCallum?
Yeah, I just got a few things to give some updates. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank all the staff for the last four months that worked at Honeyville, at the girls softball field. A lot of work went into it and, uh, it was, it was a good thing. Uh, March fifteenth was the open day. Bunch of kids, I think we had eighty-one kids that played that day, the families. And, uh, so it was, it was a good thing. April to twenty-sixth, they got a double elimination softball tournament there. It's going to be a fundraiser. So if anybody's got any kids that wants to play or wants to just come out and enjoy the time, that, that'd be a good day to. Gaskin Park, so doing some work down there. Uh, Raymond and his crew got the pavilion up. Got the concrete done, the, uh. We got to, we got to do the runners going up to it to get that completed. Today the bids on those playground equipment. So that's coming, that's coming on down the line. And bathroom renovations and I'm hoping some dock repair. If funds allow, we're going to, we're going to do some of that. Clay needs some work done down there. Dalkey Fire Department, Raymond and his crew has done a lot, a lot of work down there. There's still a lot, a lot to do. To get finished, of course, time and money is definitely an issue. So, uh, we put in for our grant, hoping we get that. If we get that, then we can complete it. If not, we might have to back up rig room, go in a different direction, but. About to, about to get it going in the right direction there. Clay, can you, uh, give us an update on the pavement on the bird parker and Lake Grove?
Yes, sir. Uh, it's, it's going well. The river came up and so they had to stop for a couple of weeks, but, uh, as those levels had dropped last week, they started back. I expect to see some pavement on Lake Grove room, um, within the next two weeks. And, uh, again, kind of like over street, a lot of the slow work has been finished. And once they start paving, it's going to go quick. So I don't see any issues with them finishing on time with that one either.
The Moore Max, uh, Mark and his crew, they've done a lot of cutting on the roadways. Like Jack said, uh, a lot of roads need to be cut back and they've, they've, they've had that thing busy. So it's, it, it does a good job. So thank you on that. I got one more thing. I, I talked, and I'm not sure if any talk to share for. Who all, but I talked to the warden the other day. And he's having a problem on the county road. Like when you go up to the prison. People come and they're like, the visitor and all they camp out. They park on the side of the road and when staff comes in the next morning. They can't get by because they have parked in the road and whatever. And then, then you also got the issue of contraband. Somebody parked down there, somebody's going to run through the woods, they're going to throw something out. He would want to try to, for us to get maybe some kind of signs, like no parking signs that, you know, back down the road to keep them away. But I want to make sure we, you know, the sheriff can, when we send him out there, that he, he, he's going to do something about it. So I'm not sure exactly how we need to do that.
Mark, if y'all can get some signs, we'll force. You were just in that curve, back, all the way back to the curve.
Yeah, to the curve, the, uh, Collins curve, right?
So, and, and what we talked about, like, and the only example I have is between Biloxi and Gupport, they've got a, a institution right there on the interstate. And it, there's no, no parking, no stopping between the signs and it's about a two mile stretch there. Of course, we don't need that much. But that's the kind of sign I'm thinking about, if that's good.
Oh, well, I'm good with that. Just what are we going to do to keep the people from, from parking there?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I know a lot of people use that, that bridge right there for Stormwell Creek to fish on. Uh, would they be able to still, do we need to do like a no overnight parking?
You talking about on five or?
On the Ike Steel part. So my question is, are you, are you going back all the way with no parking to Road Five?
No, no, from, from the bridge at the prison to the first curve.
Towards the prison.
No, no, back towards Stormwell Creek, from the bridge that's at, at the bridge that's at the prison. The little one that crosses going into the prison, from right there back to the curve. Does that make sense?
Back to the curve at Road Five?
Yeah, Johnny College is. Yeah, right, or Collins there.
Yeah, Shorty's in Johnny College, yeah. Okay. Do we get a no overnight parking sign there? So that way there's, I know a lot of those local people fish there. Um, I wouldn't want them to be, have to.
Yeah, well, the issue is like a Friday night or Saturday night is the main, people drive in and they, they just park all in the road and they camp out. And then when you, when they do that, not saying they would, but there's a possibility that they can run through the woods and drop some contraband. So what, so whatever would work best?
Okay. So. I sure don't want any contraband at the prison getting, getting mad at us. We just want to make sure everybody can, can still use. What they've been using to, the local people too.
So no parking in majority of the section and then no overnight parking in that one section.
Well, they can be fishing, not anyway.
If we could do no overnight parking, then that would solve both problems, I believe is what I was saying. That I'd be able to allow the folk, the locals to park there and still access the water. And, um, it would also keep anybody from parking there overnight with any, any contraband poss, you know, problems.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd solve the problem. So I'll get with you, Mark. We'll get it. We'll get it taken care of.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
That's, that's all I got.
Commissioner McCollum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got two or three things here. Uh, Dr. Patch, you come forward. I want you to give us a report. I'm trying to stay in the good graces of the ladies at the garden club. I know they've done some planting at Salinas and tell us what went on and.
Salinas Garden Club?
Yep, yep, yep.
It's beautiful. Uh, the Garden Club and Coastal Community Association has put about ten thousand dollars in it. But more than that, they put a lot of woman power and manpower, volunteers just doing a bunch of stuff. It's gorgeous. It's a combination of plants for beauty and plants for animals and birds and butterflies and what have you. We're going to move the trees from the backside to by the pond over this, about, about two weeks from now. Patrick Farrell's going to do that for us. Get those back over now and then, and then we'll be finished. It's beautiful. Y'all come look at it. Those ladies did a gorgeous job.
While you're, while you're up there, I'm going to get Clay to give us a report on that, uh, grant where we're at on the grant for Salinas, the big grant.
Yeah, it, it's in the design process. So I mean.
So we're designing, still in design?
It's designed, it's been in design over a year. All it is is.
No, we just got the grant agreement. We just got the grant agreement. It had been in design over a year.
So.
Well, I do, I do request. When you put the dune in, we can get out there with buckets and shovel. I'll send Jana over there with her buckets.
And, and part of that, we've kind of talked about it, the pavilion that's up on that dune is just in bad shape. It's unsafe. It's been.
That's dangerous.
Probably four or five months now. So part of this project, we're probably going to remove that.
Okay.
It is dangerous. But, um, whenever you do the dune, make sure you don't tear up the plants that we've put in. And, and we've got it back from the dune. So there shouldn't be any reason to do it.
We'll do our best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Appreciate it. Appreciate y'all doing it.
Uh, a couple more things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we got a severe problem and I, I know, uh, I talked to Mark and Michael. People digging massive holes at the Cape. And, and I, and I'm talking about, we had to get the TDC crew and public works to go down and fill in the hole with a tractor. That's how big it was. And, and it was unbelievable. These people dug, dug these holes in the dune with a shovel. And, or shovels. I don't know how many people it ta, it had to have taken. One or two days to dig this, this type of hole, but, but if, Sheriff, if you could help me out on that, uh.
I talked to Sylvia yesterday.
Okay, and, and, and just a, just tremendous. And one hole was so deep, if a child would have, you know, fell in that hole, it, it would have caved in on him and, but, um, Mark, you want to?
So we have something saying to the beach yesterday, so it's like, it's all the beaches.
Okay, okay. So, so.
Commissioner, if I can, and I leave no trace ordinance, it speaks to that as well. So it's prohibited. So the folks that are out there doing it, they can enforce that through our ordinance.
Okay, great, great. Last thing I have, I, I, I want to circle back. Uh, I've been with this man on this board for, uh, since two thousand and sixteen. Most gracious man. He runs a good meeting. He believes in everybody having their say. And, and for him to be talked to like he was yesterday i- is, is ridiculous, I tell you. And, and he's a good friend of mine and, and we've drawn close and, uh. I appreciate what he does for this county and I, I just want to say that, that for that to happen, it, it is, is unconscionable. I tell you, he, he. Very family man. He loves this community, takes it hard. I, I just want to say that.
I appreciate that. Yes, sir.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that. Um, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Uh, I have a couple, Josh, I have a couple of things. Uh, the one is, uh, Mike, I want to ask you about it, the road bond. And how, how, I know where we at on it.
I, I bet you on my second.
Okay.
Part to, uh, just to, I'll give you an update at the next meeting. We got the prelim, preliminary numbers. Sherry, Clay and I looked at it yesterday. There was a little error, but it was, it was on the high end of what I had told you. So I'm, uh, I probably have a path forward at the next meeting. We need to, to hire our new, uh, consultant, our long time, thirty-eight year consultant, passed away, uh, last month actually. And, uh, but he was already retired, but, uh. In, in rough terms, I, I think I told you north of six, I think it came in that their estimate at ten eight, but there was a little bit of an error. I think it's going to be in the nine million range, uh, in, in new money and the, and the. Actual numbers look really good as far as the rates and the, and the, uh, the timing of the market right now is really, really good. So we can, uh, refund those, uh, starting October one and that, that's going to be my game plan going forward is that we. Move forward toward a October one, uh, date. We'll have some legal work to go through between the two cities, uh, going forward, but, uh. At least the city, we've all said they want to participate. The city of St. Joe does or does not. It really doesn't matter. It just be what we actual bond. But yes, very positive. So I, I think that on or around October one, uh, we can have road paving money to go forward.
So you did say that cities, uh, they get twenty-one percent?
So right now the, the default rate is, uh, twenty-one percent, uh, roughly, and it may be twenty point nine or whatever, but it's roughly. And, uh, and the city of Weewawo is roughly ten percent. So yes, so given that the county's, is it about two thirds for the county and then a third for the two cities split. It's based on a state funded formula.
Okay. All right. Thanks, sir. So, um, I, I, I want to get a, I guess I can put a letter together from my, just from my desk, uh, to go to the city. Because I have some roles that I think, uh, I want to put on, put, give to them to recommend that they, they pay with that twenty-one percent of that money that they're going to have. So. There's a few streets that, uh, I have about seven or eight that needs to be done. And I can, and I, I just throw them one out here. I want, I want to put Avenue A on there. I want to put Martinwood King Junior Boulevard. I think Woodward Avenue needs to be paid. Sixth Street definitely needs to be paid. Avenue L definitely needs to be paid. Uh, Seventh Street, Avenue D from MLK to Highway ninety-eight. And Avenue C from Highway, uh, from MLK to Highway ninety, and also Battle Street. So those are, I don't know how we, if twenty-one percent can cover those, but. They need, I want to get that to the city so they can rank them. And priorities that are in really bad shape and really needs to be done. Um, so I want to make sure I get that, that letter, I guess, from my desk. To them, um, so they can have it and have some, some kind of guidance, just in case if they don't already have those, those, uh, roles on their list. Uh, the other thing I have is I want to share it to, um, she, she got me some good news on Monster Recreation. So. She's going to announce it for me.
So we have had this grant for over a year and finally last week Laura got the wonderful news that we have finally received the authorization to use grant funds. Uh, this has been a very slow process, but very welcome news. We're happy to have it. So our next steps would be to start the bid process. Uh, the board has actually already given us permission to bid. So we are working on putting together those, um, RFQs so that we can move forward with that project finally.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. We've been waiting on that, uh, a long time. So that is, that is great news. Uh, and. I appreciate all the, uh, the grant people, all the, the hard work. Laura, thank you. Uh, Erin, thank you. Uh. And, uh, Sherry, thank you. Uh, I know, uh, I may have emailed or. Called or said, you know, come on, let's go, let's go. But I appreciate you guys. Thank you. And I know it takes a long time, you know, and it's nothing you guys can do to speed it up. It's just, it's government for you.
We have bugged everyone. We could find a number or email for it.
I appreciate it. All right. And that's all I have. Uh, moving on down to, are we ready for the, the ward and the bids?
Not, not yet. I got, I got to talk to Don real quick.
All right. Mr. Crane, public hearings, ordinance, land use amendment parcel.
Yes, sir. I will give you guys a copy of this and, uh, Mr. Novak is going to take the first one and read it by title, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as Doug provides you each a copy, if you recall last month, you had voted to instruct the staff, um, to begin the process of advertising. And noticing the, uh, land use change. The ordinance in front of you, that's been properly advertised through the statute. You conducted a workshop yesterday that was also advertised. Um, and I'll read it by title. It's an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan of Gulf County, Florida, buying through procedures required for land use. MAP amendment pursuant to the authority under Florida Statute one sixty-three and Florida Statute one twenty-five specifically amending. The identified parcels that have been listed throughout the title. And it is for three thousand three hundred and eighty acres approximately in Gulf County from agricultural to industrial and providing for an effective date. As we talked about last month, this is the process you go through under the statute. Today is a first reading, um, which I've read by title. You'll conduct a public hearing. There'll be no action taken by the commission, just as there was, nothing taken yesterday in a workshop. And it'll be properly advertised, which it already has started for next month, which will be a second reading, at which time you can amend, uh, make changes. Table, adopt or deny the proposed ordinance. Uh, but today is the first requirement under the statute to have a public hearing. Um, I don't know, Doug, if you wanted to offer any other comments on it, bring the summary on that ordinance.
Uh, yes, sir. The only thing that I wanted to add is, um, because this is a large scale MAP amendment, it will be sent to the state, uh, within the next ten days. And then they have thirty days to respond. So likely the second reading wouldn't be until the following month. Um, and the one thing I did want to point out on this is that, um, it is also noted in the ordinance. That, uh, you guys approved at your February twenty-fifth meeting, uh, to accept, um, the recommendation from the PDRB. But also to, uh, Mr. Newman had, uh, asked that his couple of parcels had been included in. And that's why there's two additional parcels in the ordinance than what you had first heard. And also the, uh, the acreage had went up to thirty-three eighty with the, uh, inclusion of his two parcels. So.
All right. Thanks, sir. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, so we had the workshop yesterday and I've had, since this has started, uh, first been published. And the, and our, our, our meetings we've had, I've had a ton of feedback because it's in District Three, of course. The large, the large scale, it's a, it's a huge chunk of land. When we met in January, we talked, we were talking about a couple of things and one of them was, you know, the land around the airport, not tying the airport to this. So let's, let's get that off. This, this is not talking about the airport. This is talking about land use change. But it came up and it started that, and that's when it started back in January. It's pretty quick. Pretty quick timeline. And so when it, the, when it came about, we started having meetings on it and, and drew an area. Basically for an industrial corridor. We don't really have an industrial corridor left in Gulf County. Okay, it's, it's the future. If we're going to have businesses come in. We, we need an area to, to point them towards. This is an area along an industrial road that currently has industry on it. Place to do it, correct? So that, that makes sense. Some of the things though that, that come up with this is this is a, this is, we, we, we always talk about, we don't have a person doing there now. No, we don't. This is a map, this is a comprehensive plan for the future. It could be twenty years. It could be fifteen years. This is what you're doing. You're setting aside land for not development, but for, uh, industry. And that's good. Our comp plan started in ninety. That's young. We have a young comp plan, if you think about it, compared to other counties and cities. It's not that old of a document, correct? Correct? If I'm wrong, counsel. It's pretty young document. So as we change it, we need to make sure we're doing it looking for the future. Because when it was done, my understanding is, is that everything that St. Joe company owned went to agriculture because they were in the tree business. Makes sense. You're growing trees, agriculture. However, it didn't take into account our future needs as far as that's concerned. We don't have any. We have a little bit in the north, we explained yesterday. We don't have a lot of industrial land. However, there are some environmental issues anytime you do something on one of our waterways. And, uh, I've heard that loud and clear. I said it from the first time. If you remember that meeting, I said, it sounds good, but I want to make sure we have a buffer. A buffer along those, those waterways because those waterways have been studied by, uh, the group. They're doing counts of how many gallons of water come down there, if it's affecting the bay. We, uh, also know that we've got a little bit of barge traffic now going. those waterways have been studied by, uh, the group. They're doing counts of how many gallons of water come down there, if it's affecting the bay. We, uh, also know that we've got a little bit of barge traffic now going down that, doing to aggregate. So we, we have a little mix going on there. But knowing that bay and knowing that body, there is, um, there are a lot of wildlife things that I didn't know until recently, talking to some of the people that have been here a long time, their whole life on that particular parcel. And mullet spawn, don't spawn there, but they go up there each time of the year. There's dolphin in there. You can go to the T of that area right there that we're talking about, and you can catch freshwater bass. You can catch flounder. You, I mean, there are a few places you can do that in America. And we have it in our little small county. We do have an obligation to protect anything that, that would affect that. So that being said, how do you work that where we have places for industry if we need it that are in the right place? And so we looked at this map. This was, this map that we had is, is a square. Okay? And it touches that. We saw it all. I mean, y'all all seen it. It's been published. And it was done to basically take that quadrant in, which makes sense. It's a square enough. You make this an industrial area. I need, okay, we're talking about, uh, a way to protect by taking a few of those parcels out that we're asking, maintaining some frontage on that waterway back close to where it's actually at now, where we have industrial industry now in that south end, leaving that parcel in this, leaving all the structure, the land structures that are close to the road, industrial road, leaving them in it on both sides of the road in some areas, including the, the one that we're adding in there. But yet, if you take, there's four parcels if you took out of this, you're only taking out, you're still going to maintain, let me get my numbers. If you take these out, you're still going to maintain twenty-three hundred and sixty-eight acres of industrial land in Gulf County. That's, that's a chunk. That's a lot. Ninety-five of those acres are going to be waterfront to add on with the, what we're talking about with the city, which hopefully will remain industrial. That's another hundred. So that's two hundred acres with waterfront towards the end where the industry is now. And it, it still gives you basically only eighty-eight acres without access, road access. There's a little strip in there in the very back. I don't know why it was planted the way it was, but there's no, you, you can change it if you want to. You don't have to change it. But what I'm saying is, is if we don't change that and leave it agricultural, it does give us a buffer. All we do is leave those numbers off of there, and it protects that waterway basically from, you know, a little, a hundred acres, take another two hundred acres up this way. Okay? And then you, you have, you have agriculture land up there along the riverside, the canal side and the intercoastal side. Those stay agricultural. All right? A lot of them have wetlands in their pine trees and stuff like that. And then you take all this road, this road frontage, and you still have like, uh, the place where they're doing the, what's that on the, on the, on the north end up there where the boats are? Nectar Point. Okay? You still have that access. You still have the Raffiels access in there. I think, Doug, how many acres is that, the Raffiels have?
I think they have twenty-six acres total.
Twenty-six there. And then you go on down a little bit more. You still have, someone else owns that down there that's not pulled out. So we still have access points along, especially on the south end of that. But it gives us that buffer where I call the high sides of that, of that St. Joe Canal. You know what I'm talking about, where the high bluffs are? That's gorgeous in there. I would, I would hate to not have that as part of industry. It just, to me, I, I don't want to see that industry ever. You, you, you get what I'm talking about? That's that pre side of it, and then you're coming along that side. But where the industry is now, you extend that a little bit farther so you can have access. So these are maps that I, I drew up, because remember this, we are not, I know you said thirty days get here. We are not on a timeline. As we instructed last time, we are in the queue. Nobody can come in there and make changes on this because we're first at that. So we can make out the best decisions. It's good for everybody, in my opinion. So let's take the time to do it. And so I drew this out. This is just, may not be right, Doug, but it based off what you had and your acres that you had on the pencil. So I want to give this to Mr. Hammond and Hugh, and Becky, I got you one too. And just, just look at that, if y'all don't mind. And I'm sorry, you don't, I don't know if you have one. That, that was it. Did you get one, Jack?
No, I didn't. I was speaking.
So you see, so you see where we're talking about taking that little bit out? That was, it's acreage. But those tracks, if you see, that's leaving all of those, all of that area along that road, and it's saving that front, especially on the intercoastal, coming down to that corner up to the Nectar Point. You see, that won't be touched, but yet we still take in the, the twenty-three hundred acres, which is, that's a chunk of land for industrial. It takes in also, if you look down, the, the three parcels we're talking about that we're adding in there, and on both sides of the, uh, of the industrial, right? So we got left and right side. So every, if my calculation is right, every piece of industrial land that we're doing, we accept that little, uh, O-two-nine-seven-four, that little section in the middle. I don't know why it was created that way, but there's a, you see that little section in the middle?
I didn't get a copy.
I'm, here.
Okay, yes. I see where you're talking about.
You see that little section there? So then now that's, that's protecting that waterway, basically, you see that acreage that's added in there, plus the ones that we're disputing? Plus, you take that box that's not a part of this that we don't own, then you take the Raffiels, then you take the Nectar, and then you take that whole corner. That's off of there, but it's not a whole bunch of acreage. But then it protects us if we don't turn those in. And that doesn't mean that you can't come back down the road and, and say, this parcel here, while we're growing, so we want to take O-two-nine-seven-seven and add it to, in another amendment down the road. What say you?
It's up to you guys.
Any comments on that?
Oh, yes, sir. Uh, for sure. Um, so just to be, this is the first time I've seen this, obviously. So your, your goal and intent here is to preserve more or less a setback off of the Gulf County Canal for the most part, based on what I'm seeing here.
This is, this is one way to do it that's easy. When we do this initial, when we send this one in, if we take those properties off of there, we're protecting the Gulf County Canal. Now, there's, there's been talk of a buffer where you basically take and move the, the lines, all the lines, or some of the lines, you can basically do it on these lines and move that line in two hundred foot and leave that agricultural and make the other industrial. Saw's the same thing. That was all the same thing. I just, it's, it's hard to do two of them on there.
Well, one, one issue I see, and, and I commend you for doing this, I just see in, in a couple of issues. One is the fact that we're going to have a hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer from this agricultural slash industrial line. So we're going, we're cutting ourselves of another hundred-and-fifty feet beyond what you've drawn here. If, if I'm seeing this correctly. The other thing I wanted to, I, I've also done quite a bit of research, and this whole Gulf, Gulf County Canal, um, from what I can find out, I'm not a surveyor by any stretch of the imagination, but this Gulf County Canal, they have a thousand feet. The canal is essentially four hundred feet wide. So more or less, you have about, and it, from parcel to parcel, I went back and tried to get old, old surveys and tried to read through the OR books. And more or less, with the Corps of Engineers easement, you have approximately three hundred to three hundred and seven feet, depending on when the survey's done and when, where the canal is at that point in time when the survey is conducted. So that core easement, I believe, in my opinion, is doing the exact same thing. Now, to be totally transparent, that core easement can be taken away through petitioning the Corps of Engineers, which is not an easy process. But if somebody like Suzuki came in, or Yamaha, or Evan, or whoever, then they could petition the Corps to take that easement away or give them access there. But there's already a, approximately a three-hundred-foot buffer on both sides of the canal. It's already there from this core easement.
Okay. So we go, now, does that go on the intercoastal as well?
Yes. The intercoastal, I believe, is different. Uh, I think it's larger. I think it's fifteen hundred feet in some places, if I'm, if I'm not wrong about that. But I think it's either a thousand or fifteen hundred. So more or less, you, we already have a three-hundred-foot buffer built in with this core easement already on here.
Let me answer this, Commissioner. I wonder, I know you don't have the ability to do it with the GIS. Do we have someone that has ability to draw, you, you want to talk about?
I know. Well, I've already asked for it. When I first got to be a commissioner, I asked for it, and it's next to impossible. I think this one document showing, showing these two lines, and I didn't make copies, um, but this is a, a survey that I did find. The document, I think it's a hundred and twenty-four, because I talked to Doug about it yesterday. There's, I think this one document is a hundred and twenty-four pages of a legal, legal description. So you literally have to be a survey, I, I, I can't read it. Doug, I'll, I'll admit for Doug, Doug said he couldn't read it. There's no way for us to put this thing together. You really have to have a surveyor go through and actually draw the lines. Ms. Penny can't put it together. Um, she, she can try, but it's, it's, she's scared to death about putting on the GIS. Um, so more or less, depending on how wide the canal is at that, at certain points, based on a surveyor's precision, let's just say it's three hundred feet. It's somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and ten feet from this, but it's based off the center line of the canal. You have five hundred feet from the center line of the canal. So you, what you do is you survey the actual route of way of the canal. We'll call it the actual water on, on each side, and we'll call that, call that the route of way of, of the canal. And then on top of that, there's approximately, if it's a hundred and ninety-nine point five, then you have three hundred point five left on the land part of it from that. But it's based on the center line of the canal. So you have to survey both sides, get a center line, then offset the center line for this easement.
I would feel more comfortable with a map to show this, or some, somehow, Doug, how about Appalachia Regional?
It's recorded in the OR books. It's already there.
But it wasn't a part of our application. This, this stuff that we're sending into the state, because this goes through DP and everybody else, correct?
Yes, but this three-hundred-foot easement, it, it's already there. But, okay.
Yes.
Yes, it is, in fact, and that's the document that we found. Our, our GIS maps and the property managers' maps actually show it on the opposite side. They do not show it on this side, but when you go back and look at the, the surveys that we've looked at and you, it's, I, I think it's, uh, plat book nineteen and page one twenty-four is where it starts, and it's a hundred and twenty-five page document that lays out the Army Corps' rights to, uh, spoil easements and, and just all kind of jargon there that surveyors pick up and put on some several surveys that me and Jack found. Um, but no, it's not on any of our GIS maps at this time. And, you know, if we could get something from a surveyor to get to Penny, uh, then all that stuff would be updated as, you know, uh, the surveyor's notes and stuff always trump any of our documentation that we have anyway, so.
The, the problem too is going to be a surveyor is going to want to be a hundredth of a foot correct before he says, this is where the line is.
This is John. This is Tom.
Right. But you have to, but that OR book nineteen, page one twenty-four, starts a hundred and twenty-five page document that outlines this core easement.
So the core easement, I mean, there, there's stuff that they have as, you're, this is not a survey, this is our stuff that we produced here.
Right.
So before we go to the next hearing, I mean, we could, we can move this along if we've got a buffer. That's why, that's all I've said from day one is a buffer. Corps of Engineers' buffer is probably the toughest to get in the world. I mean, that, that's my understanding.
It's doable, but I believe, and I don't want to say anything.
When's the last, when's the last time we had a corps? Clark, Michael?
I don't, I don't want to confuse the situation because I walked out and came back in the middle of it. So what I am confident is, is this, it started out as a thousand, no ifs, ands, or buts, wherever that center line is. The north thousand still exists. So on the Hollywood side, that's all spoilage easement. So it's a full, it's the full monty of whatever that is, and it's more than two hundred and fifty feet because the canal is not five hundred feet wide. Now, on the south side, some of that got removed, but not all the way down. But, but again, Raffiels has been trying for thirty years to get out of theirs, because they're actually guilty in the, but, but that, that's another story. But, but I think sometime around the time that, that Basic and some of these other places went in, and they built the wastewater plant, which I think they built it in early seventies, I think, opening seventy-four. But it got removed in some of those areas. But there is a huge chunk. And again, just because you've got two things. You've got the actual right of way of the canal, same thing in White City. That right of way's a thousand feet at the White City Bridge. Five hundred of it is the right of way of the canal. Then two hundred and fifty spoilage on either side, but the canal's not five hundred feet, and it's not built in the center. So again, depending on where the center line is in its start, is a huge buffer. So the, the only thing, and again, I came in, and I'm not trying to be negative, the whole point about putting all this in industrial was not about setbacks and all the other things. It was about, if you don't put it industrial, the first one that builds a house is going to raise holy hell when they put in auto parts next door or anything. So, so that's what we were trying to block as far as, you can always add more buffer if you wanted to, with some of these things, fish-related or water-related, Suzuki, whatever you want on them. But the whole point of, about putting it industrial is just keep, keep the first house from going in. Uh, but, but there is a buffer, natural, that the Corps is going to have. The right of way is never going away unless they close the canal. The, the spoilage easement is the one you can jump through hoops, but we know people that have been fighting for twenty years to, or thirty years to get out of it.
Still haven't got, I know that from, so, uh, I would have liked to have done this about two weeks ago or three weeks ago. I'm glad that you took the time, because that's, that's your field, and that's good. I, I appreciate you bringing that. Because that makes me feel better with this that we have, because from day one, I said, we need a buffer along that, that area. And if it's the Corps of Engineer buffer that goes, that's going to go deep in the woods pretty good, because that's going to leave all the, if that's that far.
This, this line I, I have was three hundred and seven, I think it's three hundred and seven point five. And the other one was, so there's, there's two lines. There's one from the Gulf County OR books, which is more landward of the canal easement line from different maintenance type maps from the Corps of Engineers. So it's like, I don't want to get too complicated, but if, if you, there are certain places on DOT roads that they have a right of way. They have a maintenance map that supersedes that. So things change. There's a, there's an original survey, and then they have a maintenance map that would supersede that. So, and the right of way may change. It may grow. It may shrink, whatever the case may be. So as projects are done, you have to donate to, to DOT to get certain things done. This is the same type situation here. There's, this is the original line at two sixty-six point two, and the actual OR book line is at three oh seven point five. So somewhere between, I'm, to be conservative, two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifteen to three twenty-five or so is where that easement's going to fall. But it's going to depend on where the center line of the canal is, where the canal's built, and the location of the canal within that right of way.
But if it jogs like that, that doesn't matter, because you're trying, you, you're talking about development. You're not going to be able to develop it anyway.
It may be two fifty, but it's, it may be three twenty-five as well. So that's, that's the, the two numbers I was, I was at was around two sixty-six and three oh seven.
Thank you for that. I did it. Throw that in the garbage. That's ours worth, but it makes me feel better, folks, that we're protecting. And thank you, Commissioner Hudson.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I mean, that your expertise in that makes, makes a big difference in this, because, I mean, I, I hope, and I will spread it with everybody in three that, that we are protecting.
If, if a industry wanted to come in, uh, we, we would have to approve that development order. Plus, they would have to get that easement satisfied if they wanted to.
Yes, sir. If we, I know, I know we keep using Yamaha as, as an example. If, if Yamaha comes in here, they're, in order, they can, they can do a cut to get to a, to, to their basin, but their basin would have to be, and Michael or Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, their basin would have to be landward of that core easement.
Right.
So the easement's already built in here. Now, they can petition, and I'm being a hundred percent honest here and, and transparent, they can petition this Corps of, of Engineers to get their easement lifted. So, and they may want to do that. They're, they're losing, they're having to travel three hundred feet. That's time. That's money. So they may want to do that, but that's, that's going to be on the developer's side. They're going to bring us that document. So the Corps is going to have to approve that before we could approve it. And that's not an easy task.
And, and I don't mind using Yamaha. Have you been to the boat? You've been in the boat, John. Yummy Yamaha motors are in our, in our county right now? And I, and we have, what, five mechanics? And you're talking about a job? Those guys stay busy. And that's the only reason we say that. So it's not that, just using Yamaha, but that is something, if we do that Marine Science Center off of that, I would hope that we get someone, one of those sections would be in there. So I do feel more comfortable now. Thank you for your research.
Yes, sir.
That buffer zone. Uh, I'm all good. I'm good now. Yes, sir.
All right. Now, the Commissioners, all right, open to the public, you know, one from the public in reference to these, uh, reference to this ordinance land use map. State your name, address for the record, please.
Christie McElroy, Port St. Joe. That's a lot of information. Appreciate, Jack, that you, or Commissioner Hudson, that you- Appreciate, Jack, that you, or Commissioner Hudson's, that you. But, you know, I think those kinds of things is, are reasons that you kind of have to slow down and take your time. And getting eyes on these maps, understanding where the buffer is based off of the maps so that your current taxpayers and population is educated enough to know, you know, what, what's going on. I still have a little bit of problems or, not really problems, but concerns. You know, I, I talked about what's going on in the piggly wiggly parking lot. Again, I never said that I didn't want, you know, Eastern Shipbuilding here. That was never said. What we want to make sure we do, however, is that we have the infrastructure and the roads to move people in and out. So when you talk about that the land that we're discussing would be industrial, I still get concerned, you know, what will be the pour out on 71? So, because that's a two-lane road and we need that road to be constantly moving. I guess that's the concerns. Nothing about not bringing people in. It's just how do we move people and what is our infrastructure plan going to be along with these land changes? I think that needs to be included. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I could real quick.
Yes.
I just want to declare one thing is, in this land use change, this is a comprehensive plan amendment. In our comprehensive plan, one of the sections in there is the future land use map. It's called the future land use map because it's how the county sees the county growing. It's getting ahead and so that we just don't have houses pop up where we don't want houses or industry popping up where we don't want industry. We, we're looking into the future and we're saying, if we grow, as we grow, in this future land use map, let's lay out a map to show how that goes. As, we can use Panama City as an example. I'm sure at one time downtown was down there on Harrison Avenue. And obviously, it's grown all the way up to 23rd Street and growing to Lynn Haven. The two are growing together. So we know the industrial businesses that we have now, where they were always located in history. And so what this is doing is actually just, all we're changing here is a land use map just to say that in the future, that's what we want this area to be designated for. It's nothing else. Any industry, any business, anything that would come in would go through a full development review. If a business comes in, they're required per our L D R to do traffic studies, to contact the F D O T. Jack deals with this a lot as he does subdivisions in businesses and he knows the process of all the things that has to be turned in. So it's not that we're jumping ahead really fast and putting things and not taking things into consideration. It's literally the only thing happening that we're doing by this ordinance is changing the color of a map just to say in the future, that's what we want here and here's what we don't want here. It's just like taking parcels out, then we say, we're okay with houses being in there. Well, you know, houses in the same area that if we leave certain parcels agricultural, then that means you can put houses there. Well, then you don't want houses next to concrete plants because they don't want to be next to concrete plants. So then when your industry does come in, then you fill up the boardroom with those residents who's built in those parcels on those agricultural land that is in opposed to this. So this is literally, we're just taking a chunk of land and saying, in the future, whether it's, as Commissioner Pridgen said, five years, 20 years or 50 years, we want this area to only develop as industry. And any of the buffers or setbacks or any of that thing is all things that we could do in the future. As Ms. Mays had said yesterday, in our L D R, we can make those changes at any time. And actually, even if we decided today that we wanted to put a 500-foot buffer on anything, it would still not be part of this ordinance. It would not be part of the comprehensive plan amendment because the only thing we're amending in the comprehensive plan is the future land use map, which is, you know, that's, that's the only amendment to the comprehensive plan. Anything else would be through local ordinances or the L D R or stuff such as that. So I just wanted to clarify what we're actually doing with this ordinance is just changing the future land use.
All right, thanks, sir. Public hearing, anyone else want to comment on it? Yes, ma'am, come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Gentlemen, I'm Deborah Mays with Gulf County Citizens. And I had a nice speech already for you guys. Now it's all, I do have one more question. This buffer zone, does that mean that the agricultural land cannot be used in that 300-foot area for residential housing as well as industry? I mean, it just can't be used, period?
I don't have the exact terminology and I don't want to talk out of turn here. So Doug or Michael or Clay may want to step in. But it's my understanding that nothing permanent can go in that core easement without the corps' permission. So my, if, if you had a Yamaha plant and they wanted to put one of those Graceland storage buildings back, back, back there in this easement, that can be done. But it's going to have to be moved because the corps has the right to pump that sand from the canal up to the spoiled easement. So anything temporary would be okay. And I would, I'm just using a Graceland storage, eight-by-12 storage building or 16-by-16 storage building, something they can pick up with a fork left and move it, you know, with a law and move it. So that's the way, I don't understand it. But if Doug or Clay or Michael have any.
The whole idea of, of St. Joe Company Building Housing Development within 300-foot of the canal is now gone. That's not going to ever happen.
That, no, we cannot say that because they can petition the corps and get that lifted.
Okay, just like an industry could petition the corps. So we're still not protecting the waterway from industry unless we.
Sure we are. It's, it's already done. It's already there.
Okay, but they can petition the change, okay.
But we, the only person that we know that's been doing it, has been trying to get a, has a petition in for 25, 30 years and they haven't done anything with it. They haven't done it yet.
Okay.
So it's not the easiest task.
We will know before the next reading, 100% lawyer check, that that buffer zone is there because we were told in planning when we first went, that the spoilage in the buffer was all on the other side of the canal. So will we have?
Just want to correct, it's not a buffer zone. It is.
No.
It's a spoilage, it's a spoilage easement and a right-of-way. And, and to go on what the commissioner said. So we have stretched it in the past because we've had these problems in Overstreet. Prior to the county having a building department and prior to, well, I'll just go ahead and say it, some, some real estate folks that were not trustworthy in the 70s and whatnot, they sold property in, in Overstreet and they built houses in the spoilage easement illegally. And some of them have been condemned for 20 or 30 years, but the corps has never acted on that. But there are dozens of houses on the north side of the, on the northwest side of the, uh, uh, Overstreet Bridge that are built in spoilage easement. The county enforces, we won't sell a building permit, but what we have allowed is RVs temporarily if they own the property that connects. Drain fields, which may be even worse than anything else. But again, they're not something that, so no structure. But I don't know if we've technically supposedly allowed shit, but if it's movable, that's fine. But nothing struck, nothing structurally, nothing structurally related where it had to be torn down because the corps at any time could come, pump sand there. And they're very protective of their, of their deal. I think you'll find, and again, I'm trying to be, because I don't know. I know a little bit, I don't know it all.
You don't?
The, the north side, I do not think there, there is any variation in the spoilage easement on the north side of that canal, even where Raffield's been trying to get out of it forever. Okay? On the south side, there is some variation, okay? Based on a lot of things. There, there is no spoilage easement that I can tell on the port site that now Eastern owns there where they have it. There is no spoilage easement that I can tell on the St. Joe Paper Company, or excuse me, the St. City of Port St. Joe's wastewater plant, that huge track. I don't see a spoil there at Premier or where the coal plant was. And again, they had structures very, very close. As you get more towards White City, some of that comes back in. And again, some of those private parcels that are not included in this, some of them have that listed on their deed. So there was some trade-off a long, long time ago between St. Joe and the city and some other players, Premier being one of them, to get that spoilage area released. But what is not up for discussion is the actual right-of-way of the canal. And some of that, whether it's 75 feet or whatever it is, can't be touched. I mean, it's actually owned by the federal government. But there, it, it meanders, it doesn't meander at all on the north side. It meanders on the south side. The one thing I can tell you for absolute certainty though, too, on the intercoastal waterway, on both sides, there's a thousand-foot, 200-foot on either side and no building on any of that within a pretty good chunk to that water because, again, the right-of-way is 500 feet plus 250 on each side, but the width of the, of the canal is not 500 feet.
It would have been really helpful to have all this information at what was supposed to be a public information meeting yesterday. So that's a little disappointing. But again, I want to thank you for that meeting yesterday, gentlemen.
That's why we're doing it, Deborah. This is coming up and I pre.
Yeah.
I mean, he's got a full-time job. I mean, it's a lot and I appreciate him doing this. This gives us, basically what I'm seeing is it gives us a double protection because if they try to do anything, they got to go to the corps first and then we're going to hear about it. And it's going to, what was the corps permit? Minimum six months to a year before they even get, they don't even respond for six months to us. So what I'm saying is that, that gets it on our radar for protection for what's coming in. So I think it gives us, I'm glad that you did this. It gives us double protection on this.
Yes, I applaud you, Mr. Hudson, 100%. Thank you. And thank you again, gentlemen, for yesterday.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Mays. Anyone else? State your name, address for the record, please, sir.
Good morning, Rob Fisher, Indian Pass. I don't have a dog in this fight. I just have some questions for you. And I totally agree with Doug today is you're just talking about making a land use change. But now that you've gotten into the weeds a little bit, first question I have, Jack, when they, when they do this right-of-way, it's a spoilage right-of-way, is that different than, say, a right-of-way for a street? In other words?
So the, so the, the actual right-of-way, my understanding, I'm not a surveyor. I'm not trying to be a surveyor, but the right-of-way is the actual edge of the water.
And so if that?
And then there's, and it's based on this, from the center line of the canal. Center line of roads, they're not built in the center. There's not a, there's not a, you can't get the center of the canal, the center of the canal and on the center line exactly.
Yeah.
So like I said, there's a half a foot here, half a foot there. The right-of-way is the edge of the water. The spoil easement is taken from the center line of the survey and, and an offset from that center line on either side of the canal.
Okay, because the right-of-ways that I've worked with, I guess, are more for roads and things. And they set the right-of-way first and then they put the road inside the right-of-way. So the road can, you know, the right-of-way can be a 60 or 120-foot right-of-way. The road can weave around inside that. And no matter where the road goes, the right-of-way stays where the right-of-way is. This sounds like they created the canal and then they tie the right-of-way to where the canal is. So it sounds like it's a little bit different than like a road right-of-way.
Title-wise, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how they did, I'm sure.
Let me see if I can explain. Okay, so, so right-of-way is actually the property of the federal government. And they have a, just, just take the intercoastal because I know a little bit more about that. It's 500 feet wide, but they didn't dig it 500 feet wide. But they still, whatever the water does, they still own that property. It's not an easement, it's not. When the spoilage easement comes in, you could own the property. And it's your property, but you still have a spoilage easement on it. They don't own that property, but they have the right to dump sand on it at any time. And they have over the years on the north side consistently behind Hollywood. So it's two different things. The federal government actually owns the property. You can't do anything with it, whether it's dug or not dug, it's theirs. And then in addition to that, they may or may not have 250 feet beyond that for spoilage easement that at any time they choose to dredge, they can pump sand on that land that you own. The only positive is, once they dump that sand on your land, it's your sand. But that's about the only positive.
That sounds like, that sounds like a great deal. My question is, how do they establish where the right-of-way is?
They did it in 1930, whatever, when they dug.
OR book 19.
So did they, let me, let me simplify the question. Did the right-of-way come first or did the, or did the waterway come first?
I, I wasn't hearing nothing.
I mean, do they?
They condemned, they condemned the property and, and that's, I mean, so they had to condemn the property before they dug it, so.
So you understand that it's a little bit different than a road, road-wide.
It is very different than a road right-of-way, correct?
Okay, that's what I wanted. Second point is?
Let me get you some more. Since they were answering this question, can you give them, give them two more minutes? That'd be good.
Yeah, it's only take 30 seconds. My feeling is if you, if you want to control a buffer zone, setback, whatever you want to call it, you should control it. So if, if the corps has a, a right-of-way, why not have a county right-of-way or buffer zone or setback that mimics it? So that way, if the corps does something different, you guys still have control 20, 30 years down the road. If somebody comes in and builds a building and the corps only controls it, someone builds a building in that right-of-way, you're going to have to wait for the corps to come and take that building back out. You won't, you won't be able to take that building out. But if you have an identical setback or buffer zone, you can come back in and take that, I would assume.
We, we enforce their law, so they, we won't give them a permit to build in it legally. Now, there are some existing things that happened in the 70s and the 60s that, that are in violation, but we won't sell a building permit, so we, we would enforce that for them.
Okay, okay, great, thanks.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir, come on up, state your name, address for the record.
Robert Branch, I'm going to be brief. I was going to talk about this at the public comment, but I just want to clear it up from this board while we own this topic, while I come up here yesterday. And if y'all recall, all due respect to y'all, I've been knowing y'all, a lot of y'all, all my life. Somebody knows your parents all their life. And when I come to this podium yesterday, and this is where it got out of hand, I've sat back and listened to this with patience, diligently. Now, when this was advertised yesterday, and I'm going to read it, ordinance land use amendment. My question was, what parcel are we talking about? And I've been looking at a lot of parcels, Gulf County growing. And my question blankly to y'all was, what parcel will we be talking about? But none of y'all would give me an answer. And that's where it got out of hand. And I did, I'm not even going to bring up the airport, other than what I just said. And when I brought up the airport being tied to this, then that's where the controversy began. Okay, now with me saying that, I have been at this podium many a times, Mr. Quinn, and I'm, I'm going to single, I'm going to kind of single you and Mr. McCrone out. I've been through it many a times and like Tim Cross, the editor of the Star, used to say, if y'all like what I got to say, let's get the popcorn out, let's have us a thing. And I'm, I'm going to do that respectfully, but if you don't, my clock is ticking and I get three minutes. And when I go back and sit in that chair, y'all can say whatever you want about me and, and, and I hate to say lie, that I'm a liar. I've never, I've never presented anything up here as a lie. But that's what, that's what I'm called, for the public to hear, but the public don't hear what I hear back there. Okay, so I'm on, but if y'all say it, it's misinformation. So, and there's a lot of that going around. I just want y'all to know and, and agree, this is what was brought up, what y'all got today and this was left blank. That is a lot of land and I'm all for industry. I'm all for residential. I grew up on the Hollywood Canal. I appreciate, and I've got one more thing, I appreciate your time.
Anyone else in the public? Anyone else? All right. There's nobody here that has anything?
No, sir, that's the end, that's the first public hearing. And as Doug indicated, this will be sent up to Tallahassee and then we'll advertise after we get their comments back. In the meantime, any other development or discussions, the public meetings, you're certainly welcome to bring it up then, too.
All right, close to the public. All right, Mr. Ham?
Are we closed? I've just got bids. Oh, I didn't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a second ordinance.
Mr. Crane?
All right, yes, the, the second public hearing is, this is an ordinance that I'll read by title. This was the, also a comprehensive plan change of, for the peril of flood to meet the peril of flood compliant that you guys had voted on. the peril of flood compliant that, uh, you guys had voted on, uh, last month, but I'll read that by title.
Yes, sir.
That's okay, and highlights. An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan of Gulf County, Florida by and through procedures required for plan amendment pursuant to authority under Florida statutes one sixty-three-point-three-one-eight-four and Florida statutes one twenty-five specifically so as to adopt an amendment to text within the coastal management element per Florida statutes one sixty-three-point-three-one-seven-eight-two-F providing an effective date. Um, in this ordinance, uh, you guys, uh, the, the PDRB had met on February seventeenth and had recommended, uh, adopting this text change to your comprehensive plan to be in compliant with the Parallel Flood Act. On February twenty-fifth, this board, uh, met and approved us to move forward with this, uh, making this ordinance and, uh, having the first reading of it today. Uh, on the last page of this ordinance, under exhibit A, it just kind of highlights a few minor changes, uh, to the wording, uh, in order to meet those six, uh, elements that are in the Parallel Flood Act. Uh, in that last page, the, the things that are stricken out is the wording that would be taken out. The things that are underlined is the wording that's added to. Uh, it's very minimal, but this will also be sent off to the state and the state agencies for their comments and they have thirty days to respond and then we will advertise and have a second reading and adoption of this ordinance.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, any questions, commissioners, for Mr. Crane on this? Staff, any questions? All right, open to the public. Anyone in the public, any questions or concerns on, on this? One? All right, close to the public. All right, Mr.?
Ready for bids?
Yep, we're ready for the bids.
Bid twenty-four, twenty-five, thirteen, uh, low bid, Mincy Construction. That's for the metal building.
All right, Mincy Construction will award that to them?
Yes, sir.
All right, entertain emotional award, that bid to Mincy Construction.
Submove, Mr. Fearman.
Motion by Commissioner Husband. Second by Commissioner Mclemore. Uh, any further more discussion, anyone in the public on this award? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed, five and oh.
On the next one, a little more complicated, so contingent upon it meeting specs, we would award to the low bid tech, uh, International Inc. at fourteen thousand three hundred. In the event that it does not meet specs, we would reward to the next low bidder, which is Mathis, and that is thirty-four, three-seventy-five point seven-five.
All right. I'll entertain that and a motion.
Submove, Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner, uh, McCrone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pridgen. You got, you got any question? Oh, all right. Uh, any further board discussion on this? Uh, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed, five and oh.
The attorney's got a legal update and then I've got one or two more.
Chairman, commissioners, good morning. Two things I want to update you on the litigation. As you all know, I want to thank Commissioner Pridgen for going up to Tallahassee last month. Uh, we appeared before Fish and Wildlife Commission. A bunch of folks and commissioners from Franklin County were in attendance on the oyster update. Um, and then I want to thank the former commissioners, McLamore and McDaniel, for attending with us as well. Uh, we had an opportunity to appear before the commission, um, after they had received an update from their team of scientists on Apalachicola Bay and where they're at in their studies and restoration. They gave the public an opportunity to speak, which we went up, um, Commissioner Pridgen and myself, you know, the commissioners. Um, we made our presentation. They limit your speech, just as they do here. They give you a certain window of time, which is a lot to fit in, um, which is our lawsuit and our challenge to the rule. Uh, but we did communicate our frustration with the fact that we're still not able to recreationally harvest in the lagoon. The comments were positive from the chairman of the Fish and Wildlife Commission, was on the Florida Channel. Um, it's open to the public to watch, but he had indicated that we were to get with their team of attorneys and to look at the issue and it was not unreasonable what we were seeking. Since then, I've spoken with the attorney that's handling it, Assistant General Counsel, Rhonda Purnell, and she has indicated that they are going to put workshops together, ideally for Franklin and Gulf County on this oyster issue, um, encourage the public to attend those workshops. And I asked her, hopefully that it, geographically, it's close to us. It's hard for folks in the community to drive to Jacksonville or to the Keys for a workshop. So since this is the hotbed for the oyster community in our state, we're hopeful that the workshops are going to be here in the spring and then they'll have another meeting in May before the commission. A rule change has to happen through the actual Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, so it'll have to come through them after they have recommendations from staff. The most important issue that they're looking at is the sustainability. So the question of what can they permit in Gulf County to issue a permit and then go out there by hand and recreationally harvest, that we don't overharvest our own lagoon, while they continue to try to rebuild the Apalachicola Bay? All indications are that there is encouragement and positive, uh, recommendations from their staff. Uh, we had some good private conversations, the commissioner and myself, with their staff afterward, um, and we'll continue to monitor that. Hopefully, we'll have a workshop soon that we can announce that public can go to and then ideally we can go to their May meeting and hear some rule changes that will hopefully get some relief to Gulf County. The other issue on litigation is with regards to your annexation. As you all know, starting back in January, on the twenty-eighth, you all voted in a resolution to start the legal process. Um, we went to the city commission in February, asked them to meet with you all. They wanted to initiate after we sent the resolution and the notice of the conflict resolution. Um, on February eighteenth, you had that conflict resolution for a better part of two hours. Um, since that time, I've reached out to the city attorney. I provided them, uh, a letter, acknowledge, having them acknowledge that we've met that criteria so we can move to mediation. Um, hopefully, they acknowledge that so that we can move forward procedurally and have a mediation in the next few weeks, um, which is the next step before you have to file for a writ in the circuit court. Again, hopefully, something positive comes from that mediation. Um, if it doesn't, um, I will come back to you all, let you know when we're going to be filing that writ within the statutory timeframe and then we'll move forward. A couple of things with regards to public record, which was unsettling, I guess, to say the least, was their meeting in which they adopted it, which was March fourth. Um, we were out, um, with, in, in DC, came back and we requested copies of those meetings. For whatever reason, we had noticed them that we were going to be starting a lawsuit over this. The city doesn't have a recording of that meeting. Uh, they actually have fourteen seconds of a public record of the entire meeting. I was told it was very helpful, it was very positive, it was very productive. Um, if you pull up the public record, there is one public comment for fourteen seconds and there's no other recording of that meeting. That's the only one I know of. Um, so we're doing the very best we can. We have provided some literature as to what was handed out at that meeting from the private landowner. Um, we've had positive conversations with the adjacent enclaved property owners who are objecting to this and we'll move forward, hopefully in good faith, continue to work in good faith on your behalf. The questions you all asked on February eighteenth for the better part of two hours, we don't know if they were answered or asked because there's no record of it. Uh, we were given an environmental report that was conducted on March third, that was produced to the city on March fourth. It was five pages. It represented an eighteen-inch core sampling of the site. Um, I know you were all here on February eighteenth and told that there was environmental studies done on the premier chemical site and that was represented to you all in that public conflict assessment meeting. Fast forward two weeks, apparently there's a five-page report done the day before they had their adoption for the annexation. So there's a lot of things we're trying to sort through. There's a, a lack of a, a sufficient record for a better way to say it. Um, and so what we're doing again is going to try to set a mediation up, try to work in good faith with the city, try to get to the bottom of it, try to continue to what you talked about earlier, is to preserve this as industrial land, whether it be city or county. And if we're not able to accomplish that through the mediation, we'll certainly move immediately to the court system. Um, and I'll be happy to answer any questions of where we stand on that right now.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The, when we sent a letter to preserve records, was that before or after the meeting that they don't have the records on?
Yeah, so their adoption, uh, was March fourth on six-one-six, their ordinance. Um, the letter that I sent them was following that. Um, and in that request was also a public record request, can I have a copy of your meetings, to which they directed me to their website. And their website obviously has a recording of every meeting as far back as I can see, possibly ten years. For whatever reason, this March fourth meeting was recorded for fourteen seconds.
But they were on the hook for preserving records, so they, there's no way-
They are. And under statute, you have to notice meetings, you have to then obviously produce minutes from those meetings. Again, it, it's frustrating and, and it's upsetting to try to solve this problem for the city and the county, that for whatever reason, we now don't have an actual recording of that. Um, so it leaves a lot to be interpreted. Uh, like I said, there was comments that I received that it was a positive meeting in which there was good content. There's no record of it. Um, so I guess it's going to be left to, uh, the city to preserve some type of minutes and then the public, the county commission, the staff, all to try to glean from it what we can, um, and then move forward. It's difficult to do that, uh, obviously in a vacuum, but we'll do the very best we can in the next thirty days and use that mediation. Um, but again, we don't have all the information for what was asked or was not asked during that meeting.
And y'all got copies of that environmental thing? I, I know it had a disclaimer on the bottom of it, so I don't know that we should or shouldn't talk about it, but it was very questionable, in my opinion, looking at it. It's almost like, the, the, it really is. I, I don't want to disparage the, the scientists or the person that did it, the environmentalists that did it, but there is no way that is a snapshot picture of that property. Am I missing something? I mean, that's, that you produced in five days, where your study took five days.
Well, you, you have, I, I think, over six decades of a history of activity on that property, right? So you have a long history in this community for more than a half century of a premier chemical and, and, and industrial activity. You all, on February eighteenth, in this meeting, in this room, asked the city officials those pointed questions about environmental studies, the condition of the property. We have gone through a lot of other meetings like we did today about environmental conditions and buffers and setbacks and industrial protecting that corridor. So those are vital questions you're receiving from your constituents. In that same vein, you all asked the city commissioners, in your forum, what you're considering the annexation of this property, we'd ask you, like to ask you to, to inquire about these same issues. Um, and that's all we've received. Received a co, couple pages of a report that was done twenty-four hours before they adopted a hundred-plus acres into the city of Port St. Joe. So if there's a due diligence, if there's, pump the brakes that we talked about, on February fourth, I stood before the city commission, I said, please don't go off this ledge until you have all the answers to your questions. Two weeks later, you all asked very good questions for two hours. Will you please ask these things of this before you go forward in this process? And one of the answers we received following the adoption of six-one-six was they did a study the day before of about five pages. One was a cover sheet, uh, one was a map, so maybe three pages. And as I think it was maybe a, a foot, a foot and a half core sample. So troubling, yes. And again, I, I, I answer this to you for commissioner. Those environmental studies are not the subject of our lawsuit. It will be strictly based on the statute one sixty-four and whether or not it's a proper annexation. The other issues on the outside of that lawsuit, which is not for you to ask, it's not for the court, it's for the city to ask, are the things that are outside of that. So those environmental studies, the feasibility, the future use, the restrictions on that property, putting residential in the middle of a sixty-year-old industrial park, those are all questions for the city to answer. The only thing that'll be the subject of our suit is the actual statutory process to voluntarily annex in an enclave, a, a property that will create an enclave behind it. So those will be the causes of action, which we're up to about nine of them right now in our draft of the circuit court complaint. Um, and if we don't resolve it in mediation, those will all be causes of action before the court. But these other issues that we discussed will not be subject of that suit.
Yeah, let me just say this, the, the city did, uh, did not do the environmental studies, so just want to make sure we clear that up. Uh, that came from the owner. And that was, uh, that was kind of done after the fact, you know, after we questioned about the environmental study. All of a sudden, environmental study shows up on March fourth? That's what's on the bottom of that?
I believe that's what was distributed at their meeting. Yes, sir.
Yeah, but it was told that they already had done environmental study. So how you have a meeting on February eighteenth and then, and then environmental study all of a sudden shows up on February fourth? Something's not right. So that, that was the question that we were asking and that wasn't from, that was from the owner. So, uh, I, I stick to my statement before that told the city, playing us against one another. And if that is not clear evidence that they're playing, trying to play us against one another, then I don't know what is. All right, Mr. Hammond, what else you got?
And that, that showed up on March fourth, on March fourth, yeah, the report.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
James, sir?
Yeah.
Real quick, and I, and we didn't get to talk before the meeting, uh, we're, we're ready to move forward on the, on the second phase of the Howard's Creek boat, landing boat ramp. So we've got the money in place and the board's already approved for us to go out for bids, so, uh, that'll be a positive thing. The idea is to put the second boat ramp and a floating dock in between if, if, if it all comes out good. That's going to be one of the premier, uh, facilities with the, with the sheet pile deal that we, we've got to do a little bit of, of change on the, and it's been, all my life, it's been the same thing. Water runs downhill in the roads and fills that in, so we've got to do something to, to divert that water coming down that road, whether we pave it or do, do some, uh, improvement. But, uh, that'll be a first-class, first-
Because that is, like you say, that is a challenging place to do. It is, because that, you're talking about the river, how much it rises there and then trying to put the, the floating dock in the middle, but thank you for that. I saw Clay got me some renderings on it and a timeline. Thank y'all so much for that. I really enjoy it.
And the last thing I've got is, uh, the journey continues. We get to go back to Tallahassee on, uh, on Thursday, so we've got a couple of good meetings, uh, DOC Secretary, one of them, and, uh, and, uh, some folks with the governor's office. So hopefully, uh, the good news will continue and we're waiting to see that final release of the budget any day. That's all I have.
All right, Ms. Rhodes?
David Smith.
Good morning. David Smith, um, three-seventy-five Sealy Drive in Weaver. First, I'd like to repeat what I said yesterday when I spoke to you all. And this includes Mr. Hammond and all, all y'all. I do truly appreciate all the work that you do. I know I do and our White City community does. What I wanted to address today ties into some of the conversation that you all were having before about the water main work that's being done. So that is just about finished up and they have repaired all of the roads that they cut coming up seventy-one. So if you look where they dug and didn't bore, that's all been repaired. Being the ugly stepchild, White City seems to be, the cut that they did through Sealy Drive has not been repaired. And it is, well, I've personally gone down there and raked it out and drove and driven my Jeep over it to, to kind of make it passable, but it hasn't been repaired. And, and if y'all and, and I would have assumed this, Commissioner Pridgen, being that it's his area, if you could assist us with getting that road repaired, it would be greatly appreciated. Now, speaking of Sealy Drive, the road is collapsing. And about a third of the way down, one repair was tried before my tenure on Sealy. And the other side is collapsing and when it rains, the road floods and it doesn't drain until the water evaporates and that can be days, if not weeks. Sealy Drive has more traffic than it had a, a few years ago. There's quite a bit of traffic up and down that road. My particular motor home being forty-five thousand pounds is taking a toll on the road. road. So if we could find a way to address the issue on Sealy Drive about the road collapsing, either cut that section out or repair it in some way so it stops flooding, that would be greatly appreciated. And lastly, the road markings on that road are gone. There's, there's no center line, there's no borderline, there's no way to tell where the road is, especially if you come in, in the evening. When it's dark, you can't tell where the road begins and, ends because of the no markings. And that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir.
We will look into the roads, but let me address that stepchild of the county. That's, White City is a proud tradition, it's been around here for a long time. It has one of the, it has the, one of the premier boat ramps that we're working on to make care. We have a, a nice little community, and we spend money there, we spend time there, and there's a great group of people that live there. So I, it's not a stepchild, believe me.
Appreciate it.
And, and we get around to putting resources in there tremendously, and we will continue to do that. But we don't call it a stepchild. White City is, is a proud community. It meets what we're talking about, rural renaissance, it has, it has a store, it has great churches, it has a nice park, it has boat ramps, and that's why people choose to live there. And so that's, that's not what we call it, a stepchild. Okay, thank you.
Just for information, Michael grew up in White City.
I, I, I'm astonished. I don't really know why, I don't know why you moved to White City. You've come to it three times, and you thought the boat ramp was horrible, and the dirt under the bridge, and the road's horrible, and everything's bad with the stepchild, and you don't want anything. Again, when, when you've lived there fifty-one years, or parents or grandparents born and raised and died there, then I think you'd have a lot more of, of knowledge about what was there. Across from where you lived, or you don't live there today, I guess where your RV is today, there used to be a thriving boat landing and a, and a trailer park and whatnot. If you talk about traffic, and we talk about traffic, we talk about traffic on industrial roads, when you had three chemical plants and the paper mill and all the log trucks and what come, and we don't have any traffic today. People get inconvenienced by little things, but yeah, I, I don't think we're the stepchildren.
When you, when you go down to Gardenia, you got that, the back back there, and you get back up to Desiree Park, that's one of the most peaceful. I enjoy driving there. I'll tell you what, you get, you get out of tourist field down here. And that's why when you talk to some of the people that live there full-time, they enjoy it. And we're going to take care of it, believe me, we're going to take care of White City.
Appreciate it.
All right, Ms. Rose?
Kristy McElroy.
And I'm speaking on behalf of the organization.
Panhandle Trent's.
Trent's.
Partnership. Just to kind of begin, you know, I've been up here before talking about the importance of our wetlands, and we have a wetland in our neighborhood in Forest Park, and that's why there's a multi-use path back there. And this is from DEP in two thousand and four. The path is there to keep people out of the wetland, and the city was supposed to put up six signs along that path to show how important a wetland is, because it's important to educate the public, you know, of the importance of wetlands, because destruction of wetlands is detrimental to the habitats. There have been a number of letters that I've also provided to you guys that came from DEP. Before the project was even started at Tenth Street, I came to y'all and said, very concerned, because there's no permits. Then on November the eighteenth, DEP sent a long letter that I put in the record here concerning that there were no permits. This has followed up over and over and over again with the city receiving letters from DEP about the turbidity and all the destruction, as well as the contractor. So what I put before you is just what the turbidity was during that project, and what some of the infractions were based off of that project that was unpermitted. The turbidity was as high as nine hundred and twenty-four. Had there been permits, and had everyone respected that area as a wetland, and as a tidally-driven canal system that runs into our bay. You talk about going to FWC and talk about oystering, you talk about the canals, we've talked about buffers, we're all interconnected through our waterways. And we need to make sure all waterways are taken care of. And again, that there are permits and best practices that are observed in order to make sure that our food webs and our wetlands and all the wildlife is protected. And that wasn't done. I do notice, I've been doing a lot of research on who's supposed to also help with this, and the St. Andrews Bay, as well as the St. Joseph Bay estuary program. Commissioner Quinn, you sit on that board, and you are a voting member. Again, this leads into our estuaries, all these canals. And when we see all this destruction that washes from the canal on into the bay, and you can go and look at it, it's concerning. So again, everybody might say, it doesn't matter, it's not in my backyard, but it's just like a roadway. All the waterways are interconnected. And what I would have respectfully expected from this commission, from the city, and from the contractor, was to have had permits in order to do that project. So I'm going to put in the record again, you know, some of these items as it pertains to communication from DEP about this unpermitted project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, what you got, Ms. Rose?
Robert Branch is the last one.
I'll wait till she sits down, I'll just follow up on that.
Could I give you all a copy of this, please?
Yes, sir.
Actually-
Say your name for the record.
Robert Branch, ten sixteen Marvin Avenue. I'll be brief. I talked about misinformation a while ago, and me coming to this podium, and actually, what I come to to start with was my concern, August twenty-fourth, of the FERDAP grant y'all applied for. So I'm going to discuss, when I signed up, I signed up for the parks in Guff County. The parks in Guff County, being the city living in St. Joe, all, all y'all, all y'all's helped with that. So, and I'm going to direct this at you, Mr. Quinn, respectfully, and it's actually what me and Mr. Hammond kind of was in question about. This is the land that y'all actually purchased for that FERDAP grant I spoke about, that when I come to you, I said, no, that's not it, we bought other land. So this too, and I, and I said, well, looks like y'all paid two hundred thousand dollars for this land, and Mr. Hammond-
Hold on, Rob, hold on. Are you talking about this lot right here?
I'm talking about the lot on Jones Homestead Road, you first turn off.
Okay, that's not the, what you just clarified there, okay.
Yes, it is.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We've already clarified this one time. Wait a minute, hold, hold this time, hold this time.
Yeah, please do, please do.
Hold on, hold on. The lot we purchased on Jones Homestead-
I understand.
On the corner. Michael, tell him again how much that lot was purchased for. Thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Thirty-nine, okay, okay, I hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, actually, I did, until I done a little research, please, please bear with me, give him a little extra time, because, and this-
I want to hear this, give him, give him two-thirty.
We're going, we're going, we, okay. According to my understanding-
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Yeah, go ahead and back it back up to two minutes and thirty seconds.
Two minutes and thirty seconds, or two minutes.
Two minutes, two minutes.
Two minutes.
Okay, my understanding, when you, any land dealt for taxing purposes, okay, in Guff County, you look at your dock stamps, and if you look at the dock stamps on two hundred thousand, it shows one thousand four hundred. What you do is take that number, divide it by point zero zero seven, and that's where you get two hundred thousand. Okay, so I'm going to compare this two hundred thousand dollar lot the county purchased from actually Jay Rish on that day, that y'all, there's some discrepancies, and it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand difference of what Mr. Hammond says. Okay, so now we're going to compare the next one, actually two houses down from my, ten oh-two Marvin Avenue, Dock D four fifty-five, that equates to sixty-five thousand, if you do the math. So y'all bought that one, it should coincide with that money. Okay, bear with me. Okay, y'all kept the land, actually, you bought it in nineteen for sixty-five thousand, that goes within dock stamps. You sold it to Willie Ramsey, let's call it like I see it, good man, you sold it for sixty-six thousand in two thousand and twenty, dock stamp is right with it, and then you turn around and bought it back to fix Tenth Street, as Mr. Hammond says, for parking down there. And I'll get to that in a minute. Okay, so the dock stamp was a hundred and twenty-five, you divide point zero zero seven, it all matches up, but what I was in question about, and that's my, my figure. Okay, so if you add all this up, including the ninety-five thousand of the pelt properties I discussed about the playground equipment going on for a park at Jones Homestead, okay, it equates to four hundred and eighty-five thousand minus sixty-five thousand. For a playground, you bought a two hundred thousand dollar lot, wetlands you couldn't even develop, Jones Homestead property, Ramsey property, turn around, bought it again, and you got four hundred and eighty-five thousand. For what, where's that money? How can you even justify that?
That's your time, sir. Thank you.
You know what?
What you got, Ms. Rose?
I appreciate it, Ms. Quinn.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Let me say this, Chairman, and Robert, sit down, I'm going to go-
I'll be, I'll be the last, thank you.
Oh, circling back around to the Jones Homestead property, we've been over this and been over this. The lot was purchased for thirty-nine thousand dollars, close to Highway ninety-eight, on the corner of Jones Homestead and Highway ninety-eight. We originally purchased that, possibly putting a park or, or something to tie in with order. We did not pay two hundred thousand dollars for that lot. When those sales are qualified by the property appraiser for tax purposes, we have no control of what that sale is qualified for.
Correct.
We, we have produced a, a cancelled check and showed what we paid for that lot, thirty-nine thousand dollars, not two hundred thousand dollars. I just want to clear that up, so.
You got, you got any more, Ms. Rose? All right, you also have some?
I think we might have one more, but I, I just need to clarify too, this board back, Warren was still here, so I'm going to guess it was in two thousand and twenty, chose not to join the St. Andrews Bay and St. Joe Bay deal. They have tried to get us to participate for years. You're not a member of that as this board. We do not participate, we don't support it, we don't want well-meaning votes from Bay County and Walton County, even this came up when we were in DC the other day, to, to screw with our bay. We can take care of our own stuff. So this board's not a member, you're not on the board, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify that. Thank you.
All right, y'all got anything?
Kenny Strange.
Kenny Strange. Hold on, Mr. Strange, introduce yourself for the record, please. You're scaring us, Mr. Strange, you're taking your jacket off.
Good air conditioning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, I'm Kenny Strange, I'm Kenny Strange Electric, I live in Weewaw. Back, I mean, coming to hopefully get the assistance of the board today. Back in roughly nineteen, two thousand and twenty-two, the board leased the Dead Lakes Park to, to accompany CPWG to do RV parks. And I was the electrician, they, they approached me to, to do work up there. Since that time, I'm having trouble getting paid. Done a lot of work up there, a lot of promises, a lot of small payments, but I was coming to the board today with hoping that maybe y'all've got some, some muscle. Being it's county property, the man hadn't paid his bills, right now he owes me fifty-seven thousand dollars. And just hoping there's something that the county can do to, to help me push him a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll help Kenny, we'll get him paid.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'll get Kenny afterward, get copies of that, and then I'll start working on it.
And if we could sooner than later, I, I know what it is, I know what it is to be a small businessman, and-
They have a contract with the county, so they're obligated, and so that, that is completely uncalled for, outside the box, so we'd definitely address that immediately.
And this has gone on for at least a year. You talked about it a year ago, Clay's called him two or three times, I think they've beat around the bush, but yeah, needs to come to a head.
Kenny, I'm sure you've already paid materials, labor, and all.
Yeah, we paid out.
Yeah.
And, you know, we contacted him randomly, and he promises, got email saying he was, you know, just the typical non-payment person, you know, that they've maybe sold part of their company and can pay, they want to make payments, even wanted to, I could sell you the lease in the RV park as an investment. That's what he said. Yeah, so, but no, sir, I'm, I'm about as far as I can go, and it, and it's not enough money to, you know, to reach out to an attorney to, to sue him, and, and, you know, at best you break even with that, and so I'm just hoping there's something that y'all can do to help me.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Kenny, have you filed a, a lien?
No, sir.
Okay.
And I think it stretched out too far that you can't now.
I think a lien is twelve months, I think.
Yeah.
And you have to renew that every year.
Yeah.
And it costs you money. Well, I'm in the same boat.
So, Mr. Strange, if you could hang around after the meeting now.
Yes, sir.
Get your information, Mr. Snow.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, got it. Good, 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 good. All right, thank you, everyone. Hold, hold on. Ms. Mays, come on, you got something you want to ask?
Deborah Mays, Gulf County Citizens Coalition. I had a whole hour now to digest the new information we were given today on the land use change. The only request I have at this point, if you guys aren't going to do your own protection of the waterways, is that we can get Doug there to correct our map so that we have permanent record of all the research Mr. Haseman did, that, that that is a protected well, a spoiled site for the, for the Army Corps, so that, so that we have it. Because minutes, you know, trying to find this five years from now that this research was done, you know, on a video or on a minute, is going to be very, very difficult. So I would like to ask the board to ask our planning department to go ahead and, and make some permanent changes so that this will never happen again, and we'll know where those, those lands are spoiled and where they aren't.
Yeah, I can talk with, I can talk with Penny over in the property appraiser's office. They, the planning department doesn't do any drawing of the maps, and I'm pretty sure they're going to have to have, you know, she'll have to go back and look at the documents to see if she can make sense out of it, but as Jack had said earlier, more than likely to get an exact line of where that's at, it's going to take a survey of the entire canal and the, the lands otherwise, but-
Just a correction of our comprehensive plan, that we know that those areas are there when we talk about this in the future. Is that possible?
It, it, it doesn't have anything to do with the comprehensive plan, but, but what I can assure you is this-
Large-scale map comprehensive.
But, no, it wouldn't, I mean, it, it would be on the property appraiser map potentially as, as delineated, but what I can assure you is this, if Joe Blow, anybody, St. Joe Company, one of these private landowners, wants to build on a parcel that touches any of those, but specifically that industrial canal, or the, we require the surveyor to certify where those lines are. So we're not giving a building permit or development order until each property is, is identified individually. And again, the problem, I can't say that we're going to do it, because it probably going to be very expensive. You know, so what I can tell you is this, since nineteen ninety-two, Guff County has strictly enforced this, and every parcel that tries to get a building permit anywhere along that, whether it's Overstreet, White City, Highland View, both sides of the, we require each individual person to provide us with a survey that says, this is the right way, this is the spoilages, and then we go from there. So I can promise you that, no development's going to happen until we get that documentation. And the cost, and the cost is on them. Now, some, some of these are on the website, some of these are delineated, but not all of them. And again, some of it's going to take some time, some of it's going to take some legal and some survey time. But I can promise you, we're not going to sell a permit and let them violate it, we're going to get all the information upfront, promise that.
All right, thank you, sir.
And actually, that's exactly how we were able to find out about this, was the information that we do have, which Jack has also, is surveys for developments. Actually, one particular one was a survey that was done for a development that never took place, that never happened, because- because they couldn't get permits and they couldn't get the Army Corps to release that easement. So. Yes, because they, as Mr. Hammond said, they had to provide a survey with their development order. And it goes back to the same thing that we've said all along, is when the individual development orders come in, they have to provide that stuff, and it's that when we can catch it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming to the board of the county commissioner meeting. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Sub moving, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Husband, second by Commissioner McElmore. Any opposition?